I will announce the item. And we will see if there is public comment. We will take a motion and a second. And we will move through perhaps a staff presentation and questions if that's appropriate. And we will have debate. And then we will come to votes on any of the motions. So just so you know, the general order of business that shifts a little bit for public hearing items and gets complicated if we have multiple levels of motion. But I will do my best to make sure that everybody knows where we are in the process and is aware of what you're voting on at any given time. So you may hear me suggest appropriate motions or answer questions on procedure as we go through. And I'm just trying to keep our meetings running efficiently and make sure that everybody understands what's going on. And let's just all be kind and have a little bit of grace for each other with a bunch of new Alders learning the ropes tonight. Don't worry if there are butterflies, you all are going to do just fine. It's not that complicated and we will all help you through it. And all right. I will also just like to say, as I have been at the start of every meeting, that we are here to do the city's business and that I will ask everyone concerned, council members, staff, and members of the public that are joining us to please treat each other with respect, to avoid from using profanity in our deliberations and to be kind to each other. All right. We start our agenda with petitions and communications, of which we have none tonight. So we will move to agenda item number 13, which is a presentation. For our new Alders, we do regularly get presentations of, from our poet laureate. So for those of you who have not had the pleasure yet, I would like to introduce our City of Madison poet laureate, Angie Trudel Vasquez, who will introduce our poet tonight.
Hello. Thank you so much, Mayor. It is my great pleasure to introduce Ronnie Hess. Ronnie Hess is an essayist and poet, author of five poetry chapbooks and two culinary travel guides. Her work has been featured in several poetry anthologies. She has served as Chair of the Wisconsin Poet Laureate Commission and Secretary of the Wisconsin Fellowship of Poets. She is a board member of the Friends of Lorraine Niediker. She has taught poetry and creative nonfiction writing classes in a variety of settings, including at the Lee Yocke Woodson Museum and UW Whitewater's High School Creative Writing Festival. She lives in Madison. Please welcome poet Ronnie Hess.
So I guess I just get right to it. Greetings, council. Greeting Alders. Greetings, Mayor. Thank you very much, Angie Trudel Vasquez, for inviting me on this historic day for Alders and for America. I'm going to read a sonnet. It's an American sonnet that I wrote several years ago. American sonnet because it doesn't rhyme. There are 14 lines, but not necessarily rhyming. It's also what we call an ekphrastic poem, which means that it has been inspired by a work of art. In this case, the work of art is a print by Frances Myers, who was an art professor at the UW Madison until her death in 2014. And to my mind, when I wrote the poem several years ago, it had to do with the status of women in today's society, but it also had to do with democracy and what was happening in America. So today, I'm reminded of those things, but also of justice and accountability, the importance of change, and love. One thing that Frances Myers said as she explored gender and power was that, for her, she was interested in the realization of the human dichotomies which this feminist but universal icon, Wonder Woman, represents: strength, fragility, action, reflection, certainty, doubt, courage, and fear. So this is called "The Martyrdom," inspired by a work of the same name by Frances Myers. She stands front and center, wearing her true colors: a heart of love, a dove whose wings fan out across her breast, and stars upon a skirt tight around the pelvis, as if she is tied into a corset or a flag, bound to her long, capable arms. See her manicled left wrist, the drops of blood below the barbed wire neck? She is so tired, listless. Her head is tilted to one side, as if for all its weight she cannot hold it up. You cannot see below her cut-off legs, her toes, if they are planted, digging tunnels in the lomy ground. Behind her what remains are opposing columns, one squared, the other round. Wonder Woman, Mother of Peace, Lady Liberty. Does she dare imagine the silvery bracelets, their youthful brilliance, the ringing music around the marbled halls? Thank you. Be well. Do good work.
Thank you, Ronnie. I hope you see the virtual round of applause that you're getting. Our next item is item 14, early public comment. This is a place in our agenda where people who are perhaps not able to stay for our entire meeting but have comments on one of the items on our agenda can be accommodated. We created this option during our in-person meetings for folks who had transportation issues or childcare issues or other, needed to get to employment or other commitments, to give them a chance to come in at the top of the meeting, say, make their comment on an item, and then leave. We don't tonight have any early public comment, but I did want to make you aware of that as a thing that we do regularly. The next order of business is our consent agenda. And I will turn it over to President Abbas to read and move the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Move the consent agenda. Number one, item which have registrants wishing to speak. Number two, item which require an extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent. Number three, items which older persons have separated out for discussion and debate purposes. Agenda item number 15 to 21 are public hearing item. The following items are extra majority item. Extra majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Agenda item number 38, legislative file number 65136, amending the clerk's 2021 operating budget, requires 15 votes. Agenda number 48, legislative file number 64822, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the contract between the City of Madison and KL Engineering, also requires 15 votes. Agenda item number 49, legislative file number 64823, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the contract between City of Madison and Strand Association, also requires 15 vote. Agenda item number 15, legislative file number 64824, amending the 2021 capital budget to transfer 65,000, 65,000, 65,000, 65,000, 65,000, 65,000, 65,000, 65,000, 65,000, 65,000, 65,000, of existing geo-borrowing authority for Park Street South Project, requires also 15 vote. Agenda item number 51, legislative file number 64825, amending the 2021 capital budget to transfer 80,000 of existing geo-borrowing authority from Reconstruction Street, also require 15 votes. Agenda item part of consent agenda with additional recommendation as noted. Agenda item number 24, legislative file number 65091, report of the mayor's submitting Alder Committee's appointments. Agenda item number 70, legislative file number 64975, amending the 2021 adopted capital budget for the Community Development Authority. Additional referral to Transportation Planning and Policy Board on 5321. Item requested for exclusion are agenda item number 45, legislative file number 64333, transferring parking enforcement duties from Madison Police Department to Parking Division. Agenda item number 52, legislative file number 65117, Chief of Police First Quarter Report. Agenda item number 54, legislative file number 64589, accepting the report title Comprehensive Plan 2021 Progress Update.
Thank you, President Abbas. A few notes. That last item is actually agenda item number 55, but the legisstar number is correct. So just so you all can note, it's not item 54, the Comprehensive Plan update, it's item 55. So at this time, that is our consent agenda. And what that means is that we will, with the exception of the three items requested for exclusion, items 45, 52, and 55, we will vote on the entire consent agenda together, one vote, all the items. What you're saying by voting on the consent agenda is that you agree with the recommendations written in the agenda or noted on the consent agenda document. Just so everybody's clear. But before we do that, I will give you all a chance to ask for additional items to be separated. Are there any additional items that Alders wish to have excluded from the consent agenda? If so, please raise your hand. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Yes, Madam Mayor. For item number 70, I would like to add additional committee referrals, DCR and Department of Civil Rights and the EOC.
Right. So Alder Harrington McKinney has requested that item 70 be additionally referred to the EOC. Alder Harrington McKinney is not in order to refer to DCR, as that's not a committee.
Okay. So please clarify if there is an equity analysis. So how do we do the equity analysis? Is that out of DRC, DCR?
Not necessarily, Alder. But if you wish to request an analysis on something, I would just make that request directly of the appropriate staff. It doesn't need a specific referral.
Okay, then. I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any items that people wish to have excluded from the consent agenda? Clerk Eric.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question on item number 70. Is it still going to be an additional referral to the Equal Opportunities Commission or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clerk. Alder Figaro Cole.
I just have a quick question. So for everything that is under the introduction category, we just pass that on for future discussion?
Yes. Anything that is on the agenda tonight for introduction only will not be talked about tonight. It will be, it is introduced, it will be referred to committees perhaps or back to the council.
Thank you.
And when they come back, then we will discuss them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. All right. So in addition to the chance to exclude additional items from the consent agenda, now would also be the time, if you wished to be added as a sponsor on any of the items on tonight's agenda, or if you had any disclosures or recusals on items that will be voted on tonight. So you might disclose an interest related to an item, or you might recuse yourself from voting on an item because you have a conflict of interest. President Abbas.
Can you please add me as a co-sponsor for agenda item number 22, file number 65072?
The clerk got that, and you will be added as a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Lemmer.
Thank you. I would also like to be added as a sponsor to number 22, legisstar 65072.
You will be added.
Thank you.
And Alder Bennett. Alder Bennett, if you could turn on your camera, it would be appreciated.
I am dialing in through my phone and struggling with the camera and like also looking at the agenda. So it wouldn't be a first conference meeting.
No worries, Alder. Do what you can.
Thank you. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to agenda item number 44, legisstar number 64254.
Alder, we're having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh, Zoom. Okay. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor to agenda item number 44, legisstar number 64254.
Thank you, Alder. The clerk will add you. Alder Wihilehi.
I would like to be added, item number 65072, as a co-sponsor.
Alder, that's agenda item number 22?
Yes.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you.
Any others? Alder Evers.
Thanks, Mayor. Not clear whether the streetery musical performance is in amplified sound is just for introduction only, but as someone who has a long history of involvement in the local music scene, I've taken a look at the text of this resolution, and I don't see any conflict. And I just wanted to let people know about that.
Thank you, Alder Evers. Appreciate it. All right. Again, any additional requests for sponsorship, disclosures, or recusals, or items requested for exclusion? All right. Seeing none, I would like to draw your attention also to the fact that we, you were share, you had shared with you a list of the registrants tonight. And in, there may be cases in which, I think there's one tonight, there may be cases in which people register on items that are on the consent agenda, but they don't wish to speak, so we don't separate those items. But I would recommend you taking a look at that list at any rate. I usually draw those to your attention before the consent agenda is voted on in case you have questions or if it would change your desire to exclude something. So tonight, on item 63, which is on the consent agenda, Allison Lindsay-Morris of Comanche Way is registered, neither supporting nor opposing, and not wishing to speak on item 63. All right. I would also want to note, there's a number of items on tonight's agenda, as there are on most of our agendas, that are noted as 15 votes required. These items that are on tonight's agenda are because they are budget amendments and we require 15 votes to amend our budget. There are other items that would require either 14 or 15 votes for various reasons. But the most common one you will see is budget amendments that require 15 votes. All right. Any additional items for the consent agenda? Seeing none, President Abbas has moved the consent agenda. Vice President Martin.
Second.
Right. The consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda and the recommendations on the items therein? Seeing no objections, we record a unanimous vote on the consent agenda. Congratulations on making it through your first consent agenda. And we will move on to our public hearings. Again, a small bit of orientation on each public hearing. I will open the public hearing. If there are registrants, we will hear from them. You'll have a chance to ask them questions. And then I will either close or recess the public hearing. If I close the public hearing, that's generally an indication that we are voting on the item tonight. If I recess it, it is likely to be referred, just as a little bit of a guide. So on item 15, which is legisstar 60914, I'll open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO, Madison General Ordinances, to change the zoning of property located at 4,000 to 4150 Packers Avenue and 4201 North Sherman Ave. On item 15, we have one registrant, Jennifer Quinn of Lakeview Ave, in opposition, not wishing to speak. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. President Abbas.
Motion to place on file without prejudice.
Vice President Martin.
Again.
Moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. Are there questions? Is there discussion? Is there objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of placing on file without prejudice? Seeing no objection, that item is placed on file without prejudice. Brings us to item 16, legisstar 64574. I will open a public hearing on approving plan specifications and a schedule of assessments for Felon Road and Tranquility Trail Roundabout Assessment District. On item 16, we have no registrants. I will recess the public hearing. President Abbas.
Motion to recess public hearing and refer to 5421 Common Council Meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded to refer the item. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of referral? Seeing none, that item is referred. Brings us to item 17, legisstar 64806. I will open a public hearing on approving plan specifications and a schedule of assessments for West Washington Avenue. On item 17, we have no registrants. I will close the public hearing. President Abbas.
Motion to adopt. Recommend council to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, that item is adopted. Item 18 is legisstar 64807. I'll open a public hearing on approving plan specifications and a schedule of assessments for North Park Street Sidewalk and Terrace Assessment District. On item 18, we have no registrants. I will close the public hearing. President Abbas.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is adopted. Item 19 is legisstar 64604. I'll open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning at 4702 Sheboygan Avenue. On item 19, we have a number of registrants. Starting with Sean Zimny of Chicago in support, available to answer questions, representing Gilbane Development Company. Also, Sean Roberts of Milwaukee in support, available to answer questions, representing Summit Smith Development. And Tracy Lehman of Atlanta, Georgia, in support, available to answer questions. Ethan Skiles of Milwaukee in support, available to answer questions, representing Callar Slater Incorporated. Erin Ebbent of Wisconsin, excuse me, of Milwaukee in support, available to answer questions, representing Callar Slater. And Kevin Yeska of Verona in support, available to answer questions, representing JSD Professional Services. Are there questions for any of our registrants on item 19? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. President Abbas.
Motion to adopt with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that item is adopted with conditions. Item 20 is legisstar 64607. I'll open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning at 330 to 342 East Lakeside Street. We have no registrants on item 20. I will close the public hearing. President Abbas.
Motion to adopt with conditions.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we record unanimous vote in favor of adopting with conditions. Item 21 is legisstar 64610. I'll open a public hearing on creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning at 3650 Milwaukee Street and 102 West Corporate Drive. On item 21, we have one registrant, Nick Davies of Richards Street, in support, not wishing to speak. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. President Abbas.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, item 21 is adopted. And that brings us to the end of our public hearings. Now, we have three items for exclusion, legisstar, excuse me, item number 45, on which we have a number of registrants, item 52, which is a report, and item 55, which is a presentation. If, unless there is objection, I would like to take up items 52 and 55 at this time and come back to item 45, so we can dispense with the reports and allow staff to leave. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, then we will start with item 52. President Abbas. For a motion.
Yes. Just gonna look on 52. Second. And I'm just, this is a presentation report. What motion do we need?
So to accept the report?
Yes. Okay. Motion to accept.
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the report. Alder Heck, you requested separation.
Yes, I did. And I just kind of wanted to have a brief conversation about this. Chief Barnes is certainly welcome to highlight anything in the report that he's interested in highlighting. I noticed it's now in legisstar and we'll be able to read it. I kind of wanted to talk briefly about this for the benefit of new Alders and for Chief Barnes, since he's quite new also. From what I understand, this quarterly report started arriving in 2017, perhaps, because council was interested in getting this written update from MPDs, so we could be informed about what MPD is, is up to statistics about what's going on in the city and such. And I'd like to make sure that Alders take a look at this report, but also that you consider items in the report that you may want to have included in the future. And what I'm hoping that we can do is, in the future, have this report flow through the Public Safety Review Committee before coming to council. That way, there's an opportunity for the public to have a look at it and ask questions and have discussion with PSRC members. And then when it comes to council, it'll, it will have had some, some conversation about it at least. And I don't know, I don't necessarily think we need to refer this particular And I don't know, I don't necessarily think we need to refer this particular report to PSRC, because then it would have to come back to council. But what I'll be recommending is that PSRC talk about this report at our next meeting. And then in the future, that MPD send it directly to PSRC before coming to council. But that's my suggestion. Thank you. And I'd be interested if Chief Barnes has any input on the matter.
Thank you, Alder Heck. I think, without objection, we'll turn next to Chief Barnes. Alder Carter and Alder Harrington McKinney, is that all right? Yes, thank you. Chief Barnes, is there anything in the report that you would like to highlight?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I was dealing with another issue regarding. So if you can come back to me, that'll be great, or restate the question, I will probably have a better answer for you. I'm sorry.
No worries, Chief Barnes. You have been quite busy today. There's no particular question, but Alder Heck did pull your first quarter report off the consent agenda with the suggestion that future reports be referred to the PSRC. And just wanted to give you the opportunity, perhaps, first and foremost, to introduce yourself to the new council. And if there's anything in this report that you wanted to highlight, now would be a chance. But certainly no need if there's nothing in particular that you wish to highlight.
No, ma'am, I don't have anything in particular to highlight. However, I do believe we should publish a quarterly report. However, I want to make sure that the particular metrics of interest are covered in the report. I think it's extremely comprehensive. I think we could drill down on a few things that I've looked at, separating some of the categories, so that it's more specific to your particular districts. I think we can do that. But I certainly think that is a conversation we can have at another time to make sure that the report reflects the wishes of our council.
Thank you, Chief Barnes. And might I suggest that if Alders do have particular items they'd like to see in the report, that they connect with Chief Barnes and see if he can accommodate that. Alder Carter. Alder Carter, you're muted.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that this is, back in 2017, the Common Council members requested this. This report is a request from the council. It's not a request that should, a committee should supersede the requests of the council. And so I think once it's published, anyone can read it, including the PSRC. But this is derived from the council and should be coming directly to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Carter. I'll just remind us that there's no motion to refer at this time, so we're not debating that. The appropriate topic of question or discussion is the report itself. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Madam Mayor, I guess I do need a clarification, because I was going to... So now I'm not sure exactly what's in order, because I was going to say similar to what Alder Carter was saying in terms of where that report lands. And so is that out of order? And I just need you to clarify what is in order for discussion.
Absolutely, Alder Harrington McKinney. Because the motion is to accept the report, what's in order for discussion tonight is the contents of the report. Alder Heck did suggest that he would, in the future, request referral to PSRC. He's not doing that at this time. So I might suggest that if there's disagreement with that thought, that Alders discuss it amongst themselves, or that when that request for referral is actually made, then it would be in order to debate it.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Heck, did you have something additional on the report?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that my request was not for a future referral to PSRC being considered. It was kind of just an agreement with the chief that it would flow through PSRC. That way, it wouldn't have to come to council, be referred, and then come back, just to streamline things. But that can just be an agreement between the chief and PSRC informally, to have it flow through there.
Might I suggest, Alders, that you discuss that amongst each others? And with the chief, and perhaps with PSRC, and come to some agreement. And if agreement is not possible, we could revisit the conversation when a proper motion is before us. Alder Harrington McKinney, is that acceptable?
Okay, just as a clarification, that discussion, where I wanted to land is that that quarterly report to come before the body. And then, would that then be, we would be able to refer it as we do other reports? I want to see the body of the report, and I want the body of that report to come to council for us to take a look at it. I don't, I'm not really comfortable with a committee taking a perusal over a quarterly report. I think that we, as a council, has that, should have that authority as well. So I don't want to delay this and laboring it. I just want to know where it lands, so that that quarterly report from the chief of police should come to the council for us to take a look at it. And then, if there is necessary, to refer it to committee. I don't want it go through committee and then...
Alder, no one is contemplating the report not coming to council. I think, like all other items on our agenda, things come to council, they are referred, they come back to council. I don't anticipate that we would invent a new process for this particular report. So I think that should alleviate your concern. But again, I believe that this conversation can happen offline. All right, so is there anything further on the report? The motion is to accept. Alder Figaro Cole.
I'm sorry, I don't want to keep on this topic, but I do have a question. So I did study the agenda as soon as it was released, and I didn't see that reporting there. So is that, what is the report that we're discussing? And do we have time to review the report before we had this meeting?
It is, it should be attached in Legistar, Alder.
Okay, was that attached today? Or do we know when that was attached? I mean, I have been trying to get familiar with the agenda, and I hadn't seen any attachments in that particular one.
Thank you, Alder. I think the clerk can speak to that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, and Alder. The reported, this report in particular was attached by the Madison Police yesterday. So it was added to the file at that time. So when you get the electronic version of the agenda, when you click just on the five-digit number, it will get you to the most current information, as opposed to the big packet.
I understand. So I just wanted to get to know then, that was my question. When does the report gets there? Because I would like to review it before I come to the meeting. And I, like I said, have been trying to get familiar, and we have been a little bit busy the last couple of days. So I haven't, I didn't go back to it today, for sure. So thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Alder. Right, the motion is to accept the report.
Second.
Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, the report is accepted. And we will move on to item number 55. President Abbas.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Thank you. And we will have a presentation from planning staff tonight. So I will turn to Heather Stoudt, who's our planning director.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and welcome, new Alders. It's good to see everyone this evening. I just want to take a quick moment to introduce my colleague, Kirsty Latch. Kirsty is a planner who has been involved with the Planning Division since 2016. They were hired to come on as a limited-term employee to assist with the production of the Conference of Plan. And they've been involved with the Conference of Plan since 2016. The Conference of Plan was adopted in 2018. And the monitoring of the plan is an ongoing piece of work. And it's our commitment as planning staff to work across agencies across the city and to compile annual reports, so that we can be held accountable to the community and to the council as well. And so this is the annual report from 2020, really showing the progress that we've made since the Conference of Plan was adopted in 2018. And now I can turn it over to Kirsty.
Thanks, Heather. And thank you, Mayor, and for this opportunity to present here. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and run through a brief presentation. Okay, so that should be up. All right. So I'm Kirsty Latch, as Heather introduced me, I'm Kirsty Latch, is they/them pronouns, and I work in the Planning Division. I'm here to present on our second annual Comprehensive Plan Progress Update. And wanted to mention sort of upfront that in putting this document together, we worked with many staff across many city agencies. I'm just one of many staff in the Planning Division that works on this document, and one of about 30 or so staff across city agencies that work on this inter-agency effort. So here's a copy of the Imagine Madison Comprehensive Plan, as Heather mentioned, was adopted in 2018 by the Common Council after about 18 months of community engagement. And this plan is really the result of a major public participation effort to reach as many Mattesodians as possible, which I'll talk a little bit more about. But the process itself, to create the comp plan, was really an effort to update our 2006 Comprehensive Plan. And one of the main goals for that process was to include the community, to weigh in on the plan's recommendations, and to really make this plan more streamlined and concise than our previous 2006 version was, so that it can better, so that we can, as a city, better report out on this more action-oriented document. Through the Imagine Madison process, we interacted with many thousands of residents and tried especially to focus on reaching a diverse cross-section of Mattesonians, especially folks that are typically underrepresented and maybe haven't been involved in city processes in the past. Specifically, we wanted to make sure we were reaching residents of color and folks living with lower incomes. And one major component of doing so was to create the Resident Panel Program. And these were really groups of residents that were led by facilitators, and they met at each phase of the Imagine Madison process to provide their feedback. And, you know, during the process, we heard feedback from residents wanting to know about how their feedback was being used. I think we hear that a lot across the city. So we tried to show them how that was happening, how it was being incorporated into the plan. And they also wanted to know what happens after the plan is adopted. So the purpose, really, of this progress update, which we're discussing tonight, is really to help complete that feedback loop with residents. So during the process, as I mentioned, you know, we sort of had that more immediate feedback loop of showing folks how their feedback was being incorporated into the plan itself. And now we're in that more fuller, sort of full-scale feedback loop, as we've been implementing the plan itself and the plan's recommendations, and now completing that feedback loop and reporting back on what's been accomplished via this annual progress update. So here's the cover of the progress update. I'm gonna quickly sort of run through some of the background and components of this and then wrap up here. But overall, we wanted to keep this document really concise and streamlined, so that it can be digestible and accessible for folks to read. And this edition of the annual progress update, the second edition, covers implementation that's advanced the plan's recommendations, as Heather mentioned, during the 2020 calendar year. It's organized by the six elements, as you see on the bottom right of your screen there. So we have the six elements of the plan. And we're also planning to add a health and safety element to next year's edition to make, you know, the document even more effective and better reflect more of the city's departments in this work. So we've got, I'll run through each of the six elements briefly here. Each element has two goals, several strategies, and then more detailed action steps. So I'm gonna touch on a couple of highlights from each section, starting with the lane of transportation element. In each of the sections, we highlight, or we have a spotlight for one major project in which, you know, some major progress was made. So for lane of transportation, we're spotlighting Vision Zero, which included, you know, many different traffic safety improvements across the city throughout the year. And then in addition to the spotlight for each section, we highlight about 10 other items that have also advanced plan recommendations. So this year, we've made some major advancements related to implementing BRT, the Transportation Demand Management, or TDM, initiative to increase environmentally sustainable forms of transportation. And then another example is implementing the Shared Streets Program, which restricted traffic on select streets during the pandemic, during COVID, to allow more bikes and pedestrians amid the pandemic. And for each element throughout the document, we also have this table that tracks all the strategies and detailed actions, and provides a status, as well as the lead agency for each of these items. So here with the red arrows, I'm highlighting where that status has changed since the previous progress update report, so you can sort of pick those out. And this list includes, you know, the agencies and the status, either not started, in progress, complete, or ongoing. Sorry. And then at the bottom right, we also have this sort of status bar, so you can get a quick sort of visual look at how far we've come in accomplishing some of the recommendations here. But overall, you know, in addition to this progress update, helping us to report back to residents about where we're at in terms of implementation, the comp plan's also helping to, you know, bring together recommendations that the city wants to work on, and sort of build synergy around that, and help to update department work plans, as well as inform the city budget requests, as you probably know. Moving on to the other elements, in the Neighborhoods and Housing element this year, we highlighted the city's support for providing shelter and housing support services throughout the pandemic, with a photo here of the temporary shelter at the former First Street Garage. And we also touch on some projects in the Neighborhoods and Housing section that were awarded through the Affordable Housing Fund, that will enable the construction of many affordable housing units, 242 units of affordable households at 60% median income. And then we've also highlighted the use of TIF to assist with housing in the future. We have the matrix there for Neighborhoods and Housing. And then for the Economy and Opportunity section, we highlight the Small Business Equity for the Spotlight, the Small Business Equity and Recovery Program for the Spotlight Project here. And that program has helped smaller businesses during the pandemic, you know, through a very multifaceted approach. And we've also highlighted the Streetery Program, that's helped to facilitate outdoor dining during the pandemic and to keep restaurants open during that time. In the Culture and Character section, the spotlight here is the Stage Street Murals during the summer of 2020, which was the artistic response and support of the Black Lives Matter movement, as well as the demonstrations on Stage Street. So we've highlighted that sort of major project here. As well as, in the Other Highlights section, we've highlighted the many ways that the city engages with the community through the arts, such as the stencil program, shown in this photo sort of in the middle, which has helped to encourage physical and social distancing. And then highlighting some other ways that the city uses art and other means to interact with the public, with initiatives by the Public Library and Parks Division, for example. And then in the Green and Resilience section, we're able to feature this great photo of the goats doing prescribed grazing in our parks. Since goats, you know, are very good at eliminating invasive species, especially in areas where the terrain is difficult to access and manage, and they also... and they also allow us to avoid using chemicals like herbicides to handle those invasives. And then in terms of some other highlights, I'll point out we increased the stormwater management requirements that went into effect. There's also some info about solar improvements and electric vehicle charging facility requirements. And then finally, moving on to the last section in the document, the Effective Government section. Here, we've spotlighted the COVID-19 response, which really covered, you know, many departments' work, a variety of departments from Public Health and the very obvious work that they've done during this time to making sure that folks could safely vote during elections, as well as, you know, modifying city facilities for social distancing and moving lots of government functions online. And then in the other highlights here for this chapter, we've highlighted several ways in which we're trying to increase resident access to government services. For example, expanding, you know, the amount of materials that are translated to different languages. So that's really a pretty brief summary of what we've put together in this progress update. We've had it reviewed by the Plan Commission, as well as the Transportation Planning and Policy Board, and now the Common Council. And the goal is to have us accepted by the council. It will certainly take, you know, comments, questions, suggestions, anything else you all want to share. And then, you know, after that, we just want to get this into the hands of the many Madisonians that helped to inform the Conference of Plan to report back on what we've accomplished. I guess, and with that, I will take questions or comments or suggestions.
Thank you, Kirsty. Appreciate the presentation. Are there questions on the presentation? Seeing none, are there any comments or discussion on the motion to accept? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the report. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, that vote is recorded. Thank you again, Kirsty, and Heather, and all of the planning staff and other staff that have worked on this. Right, that will take us then to item forty-five. And let's start, President Abbas, with a motion.
And to adopt.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt. We have a number of folks here for public comment, starting with Eileen Seymour of Carroll Street in opposition, to be followed by Sorin Underdahl.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Eileen Seymour. I'm a twenty-five-year employee with the City of Madison. The last ten years of my work has been with parking enforcement in the Madison Police Department. I chose this path in these last ten years to be in the police department and in this capacity that I'm in. Some of you have been on committees recently and have heard me speak. I want to say welcome to the new Alders. And some of you have already heard some of this, but it's important because people don't understand a lot of what we do and what is at issue here. I truly hope you got the opportunity to read the numerous emails that I believe you've received from my coworkers and community members that oppose this move from the Police Department to Parking Utility. I am speaking for myself, but I am not aware of one of the twenty-eight parking enforcement officers that is in, I do not know one person that is in support of this move. You'll hear from others of my coworkers about the financial disaster. This is causing Parking Utility and will only get worse for Parking Utility if this change is made. The second thing is safety. You've been put on notice by several of us about the many safety issues that parking enforcement officers face and feel most protected by being a part of the Madison Police Department. And they feel they'll be in jeopardy if moved. In my perspective, it's more of the relationship that we are able to establish by being in close proximity with the Police Department. It's more of an attitude of learning how to prevent problems than actually getting into any kind of problem. Most of my contacts are wonderful contacts, but I am able to prevent issues by being aware of things that might be going on around me. The parking enforcement officers share space in the six district police stations throughout the city. We share locker rooms, lunchrooms. We have office spaces that are separate but in the same building. We bump into officers. We can talk to them. We have a relationship. We can talk about things that business owners or residents need us to take care of. Or if somebody brings something to our attention that is not a parking issue, we can share that with each district as we see fit. We receive safety alerts, stolen auto bulletins. We are told when somebody's missing, please, a silver alert. Please be on the lookout for this missing person. We do what's on the list to do for parking enforcement. That's time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I finish my, can I just give a conclusion, please?
If you could just want to finish your sentence, please.
Remember that we are not police officers. We are parking enforcement officers. We are here for the community, and we would appreciate your support in not just making a move to shake things up. Please make a decision based on what makes sense, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next registration is Sorin Underdahl of Silver Tree Run in support, to be followed by Shadira Kilfoi Flores.
Thank you, Council. A broken taillight, expired tags, missed turn signals, tinted windows, and literally doing nothing. What do those things have in common? They're all reasons for why a person of color was murdered by a police officer in this country. I'm registered and supportive of this measure, but I want to make something very, very clear. This is a step, and a small step, in the right direction, but we need to go much further. While this measure makes parking enforcement solely the responsibility of civil unarmed officials outside of the Police Department, we need to continue this fight and this measure to shifting all responsibility, personnel, equipment, and financial resources away from the Madison PD when it comes to traffic non-dangerous enforcement. Do not stop here. And I hope that the next few months, you'll continue to see why further diversion of resources from the Police Department to civil enforcement with regards to traffic is also meaningful and also important in addition to the parking enforcement suggested in this proposal, because that is what is required to make Madison inclusive, diverse, and most importantly, safe for all residents. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Shadira Kilfoi Flores of East Wilson in support, to be followed by Tyson Vitale.
Mayor, Shadira is not here. Tyson is not here, and Rachel is not here.
All right, so let's try then for Mia Masak of Superior Street in support, to be followed by Robert Hanson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I am grateful for this time. And I just want everyone to know that I am currently in front of 1125 Williamson Street. If you don't know what that signifies, feel free to ask. I'm curious, how does one park illegally on stolen land? Our ultimate goal is to defund the police, meaning reallocation of funds from policing to other agencies for reasons such as, but not limited to, supporting basic needs of our communities, cultivating adequate resources, development of much-needed programming, and addressing issues such as houselessness, mental health, substance use, and advocacy and support for our most vulnerable. The recent events in Minnesota, rest in power George Floyd and Daunte Wright, further prove we are well past the possibility of reform. Thus completely abolishing the militarization of police forces as we know them is the only justified and righteous way to proceed forward. We are all too aware that policing stems from a desire to protect property, meaning our brothers and sisters of color are unfairly targeted and profiled in effort to benefit the white supremacist mind frame of buildings, corporations, or in this case, vehicles being prioritized over precious human lives. This is as disgusting as it is unacceptable. Who is out here handing out tickets to the officers who are guilty of murder? Last I checked, Officer Matthew Kenny of Madison Police Department still not only has a job, but hasn't paid his dues for unlawfully cutting the life of my brother, Tony Terrell Robinson Jr.'s life short over six years ago now. The police unrightfully possess too much power due to the funding they receive. They are not properly trained and rarely improve situations. In my experience, it's ordinarily causing more hurt, distress, and trauma. They are called to scenes they don't know how to approach or handle because it has been embedded in our brains that for some reason, we need them. But people have shown up tonight to assure that we don't need them and they are not wanted by the majority. Police could be viewed as the biggest gang that there is, where people, whether conscious of this or not, are sworn in to protect and serve what's best for those in blue and with money, as opposed to looking out for civilians' best interest as a whole, held to a standard they'll uphold by any and all means necessary for themselves, not us. Why bother even having a parking division if cops are ultimately in charge of it anyway?
If you could wrap up, please.
A routine traffic stop due to an air freshener from my mirror, broken taillight, or expired license plate is enough to get me killed. I've seen it countless times, charged with an offense we cannot afford, then punished further for lack of funds, potentially leading to jail time, thereby loss of employment, et cetera, solely for the sake of deepening their pockets. It's unfair. It's wrong. And we will no longer abide by imaginary rules that they themselves do not follow. I'll follow the law when everyone is held to the same standard. Let the record reflect, I wholeheartedly support Agenda Item Forty-Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Robert Hanson of Fordham Ave in opposition. But Alder Hanks McKinnney, you had your hand up? Alder, you're muted. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. I decided to let my hand down because the previous speaker, I just wanted to make sure that we are consistent in giving, I mean, if we're going to count time based upon the time, let's be consistent. And so that keeps us out of the hot water of saying we're allowing more time to one speaker than the other. So if we can, if we could just hold to the time when it's time, please.
Thank you, Alder. Now we'll go to Robert Hanson, to be followed by Mara Eisch.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Honorable Alders and Mayor. My name's Robert Hanson. I've been employed by the City of Madison since 1995, during the nineteen nineties with Parking Utility. Twenty-one years since at the Madison Police Department as a parking enforcement officer. My brief job summary is the intent and purpose of the job as it has evolved is to serve the public with law enforcement duties related to parking, assist police patrol and police management. We operate very similarly to MPD Patrol. We piggyback on MPD Patrol costs and services, IT services, training, and dispatch services. We have very wide-scope, complex jobs working as decentralized units out of MPD District Stations to better serve the public and community. We work very closely with MPD Patrol, MPD Neighborhood Offices to solve community problems such as homeless encampments, junk abandoned vehicles, stolen vehicles, disabled fraud. We perform public safety duties such as tolling AM and PM commuter routes. And under pre-COVID-19 operating, we seize more property on behalf of the City of Madison than any other city entity by impounding SCOTF laws, which are vehicles that owe more than $250 of unpaid tickets with no court or payment plan set up. And impounding vehicles is an inherently dangerous task because oftentimes you are encountering owners, and many vehicles have weapons in them. And after the pandemic ends, there will be hundreds of SCOTF laws impounded to do. MPD has proven to keep us safe. Parking Utility is a non-law enforcement agency, and Parking Utility has no similar jobs to mine. The proposal, Agenda Item Sixty-Four Three Three Three, wants to change a near-perfectly running system. The proposed move does nothing to improve city services and offers no benefits to the public. The proposal hurts the public by reduced services. It hurts the Parking Utility by putting the division into financial turmoil. It requires Parking Utility to start a Parking Enforcement, excuse me, unit from scratch. It hurts MPD by eliminating great networking systems with patrol and neighborhood officers. The proposal does not work logistically, operationally, or financially. The proposal, which may cost a king's ransom, will spend a lot of money and benefit no one. In the Parking Enforcement Transfer of Operations Report, no cost or increased service benefits have been detailed. And for all the reasons, okay, for all the reasons stated, I ask please vote against the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Mara Eisch of Pontiac Trail in opposition, to be followed by Nicholas Davies.
Good evening. I would like to register opposition to this proposal. And actually, I'm going to request that it be postponed in voting until we have a better understanding of what it is actually, the impact that's going to be. There's no plan in place in terms of how the employees are going to operate, how they're going to be safe, how they're going to be able to serve us as public employees. As was mentioned, there isn't any mechanism set in place, or starting from scratch. So until we know more about how that is going to happen, I think it would be in everybody's best interest to postpone that vote. This is more than just a move of money out of the Police Department and off of the levy. Let's get something in place, if we're going to move it, that's a safe move and that we know exactly what the consequences are going to be before we do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registration is Nicholas Davies of Richard Street in support, to be followed by Garfield Cunningham.
Thank you. Good evening, Alders. Firstly, parking enforcement doesn't need to be done by police. It's a matter of permitting and fee collecting, things that other city departments carry out routinely and safely. If this council agrees that mental health response doesn't need to be a police responsibility, then the same is even more true of parking enforcement. Secondly, parking enforcement is a misuse of police resources. Police themselves have reported being stretched thin. And like mental health response, parking enforcement is an organizational distraction from the Police Department's core responsibilities of responding to service calls and investigating crime. Thirdly, parking enforcement could be more effective if it had a direct line of communication to Parking Utility and reported back on where parking is over or underutilized and where rules or rates could be improved upon. But lastly, and most importantly, while today's news was a relief, in the time that it took to try and convict Derek Chauvin, so many other lives were lost, and for people like Jacob Blake and Jimmy Lee Joshua, permanently injured. Our friends in Minneapolis are once again under param martial law after the killing of Daunte Wright. One verdict does not end the nationwide pattern of police violence against black people, a pattern that Madison PD has demonstrated its willing complicity in. Not only has the department kept a killer in its ranks, but when Madison residents protested George Floyd's death, MPD officers teargassed journalists. They drove around downtown taking crotch shots with projectile weapons. These officers have faced no charges or disciplinary action. On the contrary, MPD's first-quarter employee recognitions on your agenda tonight commended these officers for their actions. So this is not the time to declare a mission accomplished on police reform. Yes, the city has created an oversight board, but the board has yet to help Madison residents seek accountability. but the board has yet to help Madison residents seek accountability from the Police and Fire Commission or to change standard operating procedures. Yes, the city has created the position of police auditor, but that position has yet to be filled. And yes, the city has studied the department's usage of chemical weapons, but the council has yet to enact a ban. In the last year, the list of reforms that Madison residents are urgently waiting on from this council has only grown and none of them have been forgotten. Please don't add to that list tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Garfield Cunningham. In opposition to be followed by Valerie Riedel.
Garfield, you should have a prompt asking to, thank you. You are unmuted, Garfield. Are you perhaps muted on your end? We cannot hear you, Garfield.
Let's uh work on that and come back. So Valerie Riedel of Verona uh in opposition to be followed by Michael Parker.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to what we have to say. Um, I've been employed by the City of Madison Police Department as a parking enforcement officer for about eleven and a half years. Um, and I oppose the transfer of Parking Enforcement Unit to Parking Utility. Um, and I want to just highlight um our safety tonight. What we do is important in that we help maintain order, fairness, and safety with regard to parking on the streets of our community. Unfortunately, many people do not understand or quite frankly care about what we are out there trying to achieve. Many times the people we are interacting with can become very angry with us. While it is understandable that people may be frustrated or angry when receiving a citation for the violation of a City of Madison parking ordinance, sometimes those individuals react in an unreasonable, threatening, or even violent manner. One defense we have against this is to know ahead of time that we may be entering into a situation that has the potential to become dangerous. Having this type of information allows us to exercise caution or avoid the situation altogether. One way we can access this information is through the daily emails we receive from the Police Department. These emails talk about recent significantly violent situations that have occurred across the city each day. Information we receive in these emails include the address of the occurrence, makes and models of vehicles involved, license plates, as well as the type of incident that has occurred. This information helps us know if we should avoid a particular area. Another type of correspondence that we receive from the Police Department are emails about dangerous subjects. They include a photo and description of these subjects as well as a summary of why they should be considered dangerous. They may also include areas of the city frequented by these subjects and vehicles operated by them. If we are transferred to Parking Utility, we may lose the access to the important information that helps keep us safe on the streets. Equally as important is the information we query and receive from the software that accesses the DOT database. This software can tell us if a vehicle we are working with is stolen. Knowing this information tells us when we may need to use caution as the subjects who have stolen the vehicle may still be in the area. We can then call on police officers to safely process the stolen vehicle and return it to its owner. The software can also alert us when a vehicle we are dealing with is registered to a subject who is wanted by law enforcement. We can then request information from Dane County Dispatch about whether or not we can safely proceed. Moving us from the Police Department would remove our access to this software. There are many reasons why this move should not happen. To me, our safety is the number one, the most important. And I hope that as representatives of the community
And that's time.
Thank you.
Opposition.
Our next registrant is Michael Parker of Fort Atkinson. In opposition to be followed by Benji Ramirez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. I would like to take the time to thank you all for hearing me out first and welcome you, Alders, where we get a chance to speak to you about this issue. Like many other people speaking tonight, I am currently employed by the City of Madison as a PEO. You've heard about our safety issues. I stress the same concerns. I'm worried about losing my radio, not having access to the CAD, and not having the connection that we have to the Police Department through the radio to have the fast response. In addition, there's also concerns regarding the financial impact of this move. Parking Utility has already taken on our whole payroll budget. Moving us to Parking Utility, in my eyes, would have the city signing contracts they already have to the Madison Police Department to spend more money that doesn't seem fiscally responsible. I've heard this issue raised to Transportation Commission last year about budget issues. We've all talked about it tonight about the budget issues. By moving us to Parking Utility, this will only increase the funds being used and not help their financial issues. By keeping with the Police Department and their current contracts, Parking Utility won't have to figure out how to fund the additional support that's already absorbed by the police. The functions that include the designated IT, fleet service coordinator, purchasing coordinator, and administrative personnel dedicated to parking enforcement, not to mention the physical space and storage that is required to house the staff, the equipment, and the vehicles. The financial impacts suffered this year in the pandemic has been overwhelming. Last year, they were forced to leave several hourly employees due to budget issues. This is a big concern and it's a bit scary for me. Why put an unnecessary financial burden on a city agency that is already struggling? And I heard tonight that some people worried about us being armed a little bit in the conversations. I just want to remind the public that none of the City of Madison Parking Enforcement Officers carry firearms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Benji Ramirez of Franklin Street. In support to be followed by Dan Fitch.
Yeah, there's no Benji uh or Dan, but Andy is here.
All right, then Andy Janeway of East Johnson. In support to be followed by Elizabeth Mar.
Am I on?
Yes.
Good evening. Um, so primarily what I would like to say is I have not heard a single reason to be registered in opposition that would not be solved with moving the resources with the people. And I would like to remind the fellow individuals who have yet to speak that you can support this item with conditions. And I wholeheartedly support this agenda item with the conditions that the resources be moved with the people and that there be and that there be made a publicly available, direct, concise plan for how that will be done. No one ever said change was easy. If anyone ever told you change was easy, I regret to inform you, they lied to your face. However, this is what change looks like. The solution to all of these problems lies in divesting from a police state that clearly does not care for its people and that criminalizes being poor and traps people into a justice system that is unfair. And the first step toward solving that problem is moving the resources with the people away from the cops. I yield my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Elizabeth Mar of Pond Street. In support to be followed by Bonnie Rowe.
Yeah, there's no one by that name on the list, but Bonnie is here.
All right, then Bonnie Rowe of Somerset Lane. In opposition to be followed by Merle Olson.
Hi, Mayor and Alders, and welcome to all the new Alders. When most of us see these parking Jeeps or new hybrid parking cars, it's easy to think of them as people who just write tickets. But these Parking Enforcement Officers do so much more. They keep our community safe by finding and locating stolen vehicles, alerting dispatch and officers to wanted suspects and missing persons. They assist the homeless and give tourist directions. They help business owners by clearly clearing illegally parked cars blocking their premises. They also help generate revenue for the city. How much do we value the services they provide? How much do we value these city employees? We've heard from a number of them tonight and also at other meetings about what they will lose along with this move if it takes place. The funds have already been diverted out of MPD, so it doesn't have anything to do with the funding. But why remove duties from an agency where everything is working pretty flawlessly to an unknown situation that does not have the infrastructure that's needed? Before voting, I hope that each one of you will read through the report linked below and make a simple pro con list for this move, as many of us do before making a big decision. You might be surprised like I was at what you find. There is no good reason for this move. I have asked and have yet to hear what the sponsors of this legislation like about it. The parking money is already out of MPD. There's no good reason to remove the duties. Please listen to the employees, listen to their needs, listen to what makes sense for them and for our city. And then please vote no on transferring these duties. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Merle Olson of South Carroll. In opposition to be followed by Erin Shipowski.
Good evening. I've been with Parking Enforcement for almost seventeen years. I would like to discuss some of the logistics of this move. Currently Parking Enforcement Officers work in a decentralized model. We work out of six police district offices. This enables Parking Enforcement Officers to have faster response times as they are already working in the areas around the district offices. Being close to calls allow also allows us more time to address other parking issues in the area such as junked vehicles, street storage issues, and abandoned vehicle drop zones. In addition, Parking Enforcement Officers have more time to build relationships with community members and to address their parking issues, including school parking issues, neighborhood parking issues, and business parking issues. Having police district stations available to house Parking Enforcement Officers gives us locations distributed throughout the community and provides safe and secure housing for our work vehicles and equipment. All these costs are currently absorbed by the Police Department. Being under law enforcement gives us access to more comprehensive records when running plates, which allows us to make more informed decisions and alerts us to possible safety issues. Also, when we work out of police district stations, we have the opportunity to talk to police officers and go over parking issues and safety-related neighborhood issues. We have access to police tactical information that helps us perform our duties in a far safer and efficient manner. Without this, we would be going into areas unaware of potential dangers or situations. A move to Parking Utility would likely result in Parking Enforcement Officers being centrally located. Per the Parking Enforcement Transfer Operations Report, Parking Utility has two office locations, the Madison Municipal Building and eleven-twenty Sale Street. These locations are centrally located. The parking ramps have also been listed as possible sites, but these are again all centrally located. A move to a centralized location would also have increased cost implications. There aren't any offices currently available for us to move in. Per the report, both the offices at Madison Municipal Building and the Sale Street location are near capacity for existing operations. The Sale Street location currently has limited surface parking and does not have adequate space to store additional city vehicles. Building the space for housing Parking Enforcement Officers and secure parking for work vehicles will cost the city more money during these challenging fiscal times. The resulting move to a centralized location will result in longer drive times for parking officers as they would no longer be housed in the districts they serve, with the exception of the district the whole group is housed in. Longer drive times result in longer response times and a decreased level of service to community members. Please vote against the transfer of Parking Enforcement Operations to Parking Utility. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Erin Shipowski of Park Ridge.
I was worried I wouldn't get it in.
To be followed by Rebecca Mugford.
Hello, my name's Erin Shipowski and I'm a Parking Enforcement Officer and live in the City of Madison. First off, I'd like to congratulate you on all being elected to serve the City of Madison as our Alders, so congratulations. I love working for the City of Madison, living in the City of Madison, and I'm all about Team City. If this move would benefit the community members and be cost effective, I would be all for it. However, I feel that this move may have negative impacts on the city and be a financial burden during these difficult budgetary times. The majority of Parking Enforcement costs have already been moved to Parking Utility's budget, and it might seem like the correct move then would be to move our whole operation to Parking Utility. However, it does not make sense financially or from an operational perspective. While we both have parking in our job titles, we do have different roles. Parking Utility collects and maintains ramps and meters. Parking Enforcement does what the job title implies. We enforce parking ordinances seven days a week uh from six-thirty AM until twelve-thirty AM. In our absence, MPD enforces these ordinances. There are also many financial implications. Currently, we work out of the six district MPD stations, and this allows us to safely house our parking vehicles, uh which includes two camera vehicles, which need to be stored inside and be plugged in, as well as an electric vehicle, which needs a charging station, uh which we currently have. These district stations also house our staff, which means we have locker rooms, break rooms, workstations, et cetera. Then there is also the administrative aspect, uh uniform vendors, scheduling payroll system, towing contract, uh IT. Uh, these would be additional costs for duplicate systems and buildings we currently have within MPD and our absorbed costs to MPD. We do not yet know uh where we would be housed within Parking Utility. There's not enough room for our personnel or our equipment in any of these existing Parking Utility structures. How much would this cost? Would we rent additional space, build new structures, or renovate existing structures? How will we be dispatched to calls for service? How? We have been told that Dane County Dispatch would keep us, but in what way? How much would that cost? Why are we burdening the city with these additional costs? I cannot stress enough that these are absorbed costs to MPD. An email was recently sent out to all employees about an ongoing budget issues within the city and that our costing continues services will be greater than the levy the state allows us, uh creating a structural deficit. In addition, decreased revenue from Monona Terrace, the Parking Utility, Madison Metro, and the room tax will continue to produce additional deficits this year and likely future years. The goal is to manage these deficits with as little impact on the city's workforce as possible. It only seems wise then to not spend additional money to move Parking Enforcement to Parking Utility if it does not benefit the city in services or in the bottom line. Uh, thank you for your time, and I hope that you will vote against the move.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Rebecca Mugford of South Carroll Street. In opposition, representing ASME six thousand. Uh, to be followed by Walt Jackson.
Good evening. Um, I am a Parking Enforcement Officer and a newly elected board member of ASME, and I congratulate the new Alders on their new positions. I just want to talk a little bit about how there is a false narrative out there or a misunderstanding that Parking Enforcement Officers are wannabe cops or were pulling people over for air fresheners or that were brainwashed by the Police Department or even were racists who are supporting racists. I've heard a lot of different things. Parking Enforcement Officers aren't the thin blue line. We don't, that's not us. Uh, all these accusations are just false. We're not negative caricatures presented on TV shows like Parking Wars or Zootopia. We are simply civilian workers that enjoy providing services to all of our Madison neighborhoods and communities. I feel that Parking Officers provide a civilian service to the public much like the suggested role of the social workers, the new idea of getting social workers out there. POs provide a civilian response to police issues. We respond to parking calls and issues that were historically handled by police officers. Now we're doing it. We're civilians. Aren't we already fulfilling that prophecy of reimagined public safety? Why do we have to fulfill that prophecy separate from where we currently reside? This, the system isn't broke, and I don't understand why we're trying to fix it. This move will diminish services, financially crush Parking Utility, and will move and the move will financially duplicate costs for our city during a pandemic. And if there are organizations that need funding, I don't understand why we would duplicate costs. That just drives or delays funding of these other organizations that need it, need the money. A few people in other meetings have accused Parking Officers of not being Team Madison or low hanging fruit. The accusation is paradoxical and the latter is inappropriate. The cost of transportation so system is solely being put on the backs of workers, all while under the guise of reimagining public safety. In reality, this move doesn't make any sense. Really, there is no solid plan from leadership to keep our workers safe. It seems as though we, the workers, are being sacrificed to a transportation, transportation service. As for the defund the police supporters, uh your actual logical movement seems to be used for political gain, and it's pitting us against each other. We are the civilians you want working for the Police Department.
And that's time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Walt Jackson of Stoughton, Wisconsin. In opposition, representing ASME Local six thousand, to be followed by Jack Phillips.
Hi, can I ask a question?
Uh, Alder. Alder Bennett, is a question for registrants or for me?
Yes, for the registrants.
We will have a moment to ask questions for registrants after we get through all of them.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Apologies, Walt. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Alders and new Alders to the city council. I am Walt Jackson, Vice President of Madison Employee Association, Ask Me Local 6000. I could go into the many reasons why the move of Parking Enforcement Officers to Parking Utility is a bad organizational change. But you have heard that before from me and will hear that from these other people tonight affected by this ill-conceived budgetary move. I am here as the voice of the association that represents some of those city workers that this will directly affect. For those new to the council, the association model of employee representation was drawn in response of the loss of collective bargaining for municipal employees some ten years ago. Its design was to mimic prior law given to the collective bargaining process as it relates to working conditions and to provide a general guide for the discussion, application, and enforcement of the provisions of benefits to employees within the Applicable Compensation Groups 16 and 20. Meet and confer discussion is where this change should happen and not in a mayoral budget, city committee, or council action. We at Local 6000 and Ask Me Council 32 didn't ask or seek out this change. However, given what we received, we had no choice but to engage in the process defined by the handbook, ordinances, and resolutions or in future political endorsements and contributions by our newly reconstituted, member-driven Dane County People Organization. Many of you have reaped the benefits of Ask Me People, and I hope more of you will in the future. However, if city employees are wrongly treated, our members will rise to all worker injustices. This move does nothing to promote the needed transformation between our communities of color and the Madison Police Department. Parking Enforcement Officers are not the cause of any policy issues regarding lethal force. Those policy issues can be and should be worked on in the collective bargaining process with city HR, MPD management, and the Commission Union of the Madison Police Department. So I ask, what is broken for this work unit at Madison Police? In closing, the association asks you to please listen to those directly affected employees and vote for the worker as any true labor progressive would do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Jack Phillips of South Mills in support, to be followed by Alexandra Wilburn.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jack Phillips. My pronouns are they and them. I'm a grad student at UW. Today, we saw a modicum of justice in a high-profile case of a police officer murdering an unarmed black man. However, this does not address the institutional issues that led to George Floyd's death. It falls on you to address these issues. Officer Hanson bragged about impounding vehicles and contributing to sweeps of our homeless neighbors. These are cruel solutions to problems created by a broken system. People will still be houseless whether or not a parking cop causes their home to be violently removed. Looting property from marginalized communities for a paltry $150 in unpaid fees is unnecessarily cruel and pushes people on the edge into financial ruin. That parking cops see Madison being the top looter of private property as a point of pride is frankly disgusting. Several parking cops have pointed to safety as a concern. Valerie Riddell said that their primary source of information is a daily email. I was unaware that only cops had access to email. I was concerned because as a graduate student, email is pretty important to my day-to-day work. Let's see, who is going to open Outlook? And yeah, I still have access to email technology, and I'm not employed by the police department. Weird how that works. Would MPD be unwilling to provide a daily update on safety for Parking Enforcers? For that matter, would MPD be unwilling to respond to calls from Parking Enforcers if they weren't paid by the same department? While this tracks with the ethos of police officers I've met, I think that's more an indictment to cops than of this proposal. Finally, I want to echo Andy Janeway's comments. Resources can move with people. Parking Enforcers can still receive email outside of the police department, and radios even still work for people that aren't affiliated with police departments. These are important and necessary changes to the structure of city government. And finally, for the Ask Me leadership speaking, as a trade, as a labor unionist myself, we don't want cops in our labor movement, and we don't want cop collaborators in our labor movement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Alexandra Wilburn of East Gorham in support, to be followed by Bob Schaefer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to say I wish that even our street names weren't recited. If our area code would, that would be, I think, a safer way to go about people's information being out there in a public forum. I support this, and you know, I hear the fear and the, from the, from the workers. There are definitely ways, as there isn't a plan in place now doesn't mean there can't be a plan in place with already the decision like, okay, we are going to do this. We are going to figure this out. Because as a part of the defund movement, it is truly an abolish the terminology of police and that we abolish all of the practices of the police and of a, of a, you know, punitive, aggressive, violent system. It will cost money. It will cost the city money, I'm sure. But as Andy Janeway said, you know, we can move those resources with those people. There needs to be ongoing restructuring, and it will cost money. The city shelled out a couple million because Matt Kenny, in a civil case, because Matt Kenny murdered a nineteen-year-old child. So I think that the city can afford to shell out more money in order to continually have a public safety model and not a aggressive, abusive model of policing. You know, Madison Police in the 1930s, late 1920s, I believe, 1920s, 1930s, the Madison Police secretly deputized thirty KKK members, and they subsequently demolished the Green Bush neighborhood and the people in that neighborhood. So being part of the police is not something to feel a point of pride on. No one gives you extra respect because of it. I also don't think we should be impounding people's cars because they owe the city money, because likely you're just impounding poor people, making it harder for poor people. So it's sort of an inherently classist punitive system that is retroactive to justice and to what will eventually, you know, perpetuate the public safety, public health, and economy of all of Madison. So with that, I urge everyone on the council to publicly come out to say that Matt Kenny should also have guilty murder charges for murdering Tony Robinson.
And that's time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Bob Schaefer of Cottonwood Circle in opposition, to be followed by Peter Schneider.
Thank you, and welcome new Alders. And one of the things in listening to all of this, I go back to my fifty-one-year career and found that what this situation is, is that you've got numerous people who are in that job and who are telling you what they need to do in order to do that job. What the people who are supporting and suggesting this, that they have no clue what it's like to be in that job and that if you are really going to get rid of all of this stuff, you might as well just do away with Parking Enforcement, according to some of the people. So since that's not a good option, I think that what this council needs to do is that this council needs to understand that its position is to support the people that work for the city. And if the people that work for the city are saying, this is what we need to do and have in order to do the job effectively, then you're not listening to them if you go ahead and you make this change. So that there's, I'm sure that in the jobs that you have, that you have outside of the council, that if somebody comes along and tells you what you have to do and you aren't in cooperation with that or don't see that to be, you still have to follow their order, you would not like it. And that, so I think that this is the basis that you have to make your decision on, is to listen to the people who are doing the job and listening to what they have to say they need to have in order to do this. Defunding the police and everything like that and getting these out of the police, getting this as an anti-police perspective, in my opinion, in listening to it, and that it has no bearing whatsoever on this operation of the Parking Enforcement. I hope this makes sense to you, and I hope it's received respectfully because you all deserve respect. So do the Parking Enforcement people. They deserve the respect to be able to do the job that they know how to do best and better than anybody who has not done that job. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Peter Schneider of Hempstead Road in opposition, to be followed by Matt Rowe.
There's no Peter or Matt. It's asking me to promote Garfield to a panelist, probably due to his device.
Right, so let's, let's start at the top of the list and see if we have any of the folks that we missed. Shadira Kilfey Flores? Or Tyson Vitale or Rachel Christman?
No.
All right, then Garfield Cunningham?
He wasn't here. And he seems to have disappeared again.
He's here on my list.
Yeah, Garfield, you need to unmute yourself. Hello, Garfield? Still not hearing you.
Garfield, you look unmuted on our side. You may need to unmute your microphone or do something on your device. If you're calling in on a phone, you should press star six. While we're waiting, do we have Benji Ramirez, Dan Fitch, Elizabeth Marr, Pete Schneider, or Matt Rowe?
Metta Merr.
Alder Alboras.
Yeah, Garfield is actually a neighbor right across the street, and his family has shot me a message that he is unable to mute his mic on his end, so he does wish to speak, but he's having some technical issues. So I'm assuming he will be able to get that figured out as soon as he can. But just an FYI, I wanted to share that.
Thank you, Alder Alboras. I think we, we may be running out of time here. I don't believe any of our other registrants who wish to speak are with us. I'll just wait for staff to confirm that.
That's correct, ma'am.
Thank you. So we'll move on to questions. If for some reason Garfield can make the technology work, we could come back to that, but after that, we're going to have to move on. So are there questions for any of our registrants who have spoken tonight? Alder Bennett, now's your chance. Not seeing any hands raised to ask questions of our registrants. Let's try Garfield one more time, please.
Yep, still not hearing you, Garfield. Try promoting him to panelist one more time, see if it does anything. Doesn't seem to be working, sorry.
Right, apologies, Garfield, that we can't make the technology work for you. Please email allalders@cityofmadison.com with your comments, and I'll ask Alders to check your email to receive that comment. Seeing no other questions for any of our registrants, we will move on to questions for staff. Alder Carter. Oh, oh, wait, wait. I believe we have got Garfield with us.
Garfield, you gotta turn off your speaker. There you go.
Try again. Whatever you did worked. And just keep your speaker off while you speak to us. Looks like you're on the phone if you press star six.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, so I'm on the phone. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay. Members of the City of Madison Common Council, my name is Garfield Cunningham. I am a Parking Enforcement Officer. I have been working for the city of Madison for seventeen years. I am grateful, thankful, and blessed to be hired by the city of Madison via the Madison Police Department to perform this public service. During my seventeen years of service, I have worked in several areas of Parking Enforcement, but my main duties have been spent doing meter enforcement. I have enjoyed and benefited from this assignment, and I am sure the citizens of Madison have benefited too. Like all my fellow Parking Enforcement Officers, I am taking this opportunity to state why I oppose the pending proposal to move the Parking Enforcement operations from under the umbrella of the Madison Police Department and place them under that of Parking Utility. In no way am I prepared to adequately articulate the financial cost of the impacts of our safety under the Madison Police Department versus the Madison Parking Utility. My major focus and concerns are on and about our safety and security, which have been adequately addressed, secured and maintained under the leadership of the Madison Police Department. The enforcement of traffic laws and parking ordinances are always a crucial aspect of this business. I know the sentiment is shared by my fellow hard-working and concerned Parking Enforcement Officer coworkers. A recent study of workplace violence has shown that over two million people are affected by workplace violence each year in the workplace. Some of these people are Parking Enforcement Officers. That includes the City of Madison Parking Enforcement Officers, and yes, that includes me. Our safety and security have been frequently challenged and jeopardized. While out on daily evening and night patrol, my coworkers and I are regularly subjected to verbal abuse and violent outbursts when writing parking tickets and in many cases, without writing parking tickets. Our mere presence have oftentimes triggered and elicited these kind of responses from irate and disagreeable vehicle owners and drivers. In more severe cases, some of us have been physically attacked, assaulted, and sight-swiped by angry, irate, and disgruntled vehicle owners and drivers who get caught and have been ticketed for parking ordinance violations and breaking rules. In my seventeen years of working as a Parking Enforcement Officer, I have had many contact with disgruntled drivers, vehicle owners, and people. I do recall having run-ins or contact with thrown objects from moving vehicles. Disgruntled drivers, vehicle owners, and people have physically blocked my path in the effort to prevent me from writing a ticket. They have spit at me. They have threatened to harm me. They have hurled racial epithets and slurs at me. They tell me to F off, to go F myself, F Parking Enforcement, and enter the car and rev the car's engine and drive towards me at a high rate of speed in attempt to run me over.
If you could wrap up, please.
Mental challenge and deranged people have confronted me and blocked my path. Believe me, these are only a few of the safety and security hazards I have experienced. My coworkers and I work with this faith and confidence that our uniforms and equipment give us quick access to and response from our fine Madison Police Officers when our safety and security are at risk or challenged. Remember, our safety is always jeopardized.
Garfield, if you could wrap up, please.
Remember, our safety is always jeopardized. For these reasons... For these reasons, I respectfully ask that the City of Madison Parking Enforcement Officers and its operations continue to function under the umbrella and operations of the City of Madison Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for bearing with the technology issues so that we could hear from you tonight. Now, we will turn to questions for staff. Alder Carter.
Thank you. Can you tell me if Sabrina is on tonight?
Yes, Alder, she is.
Oh, okay, thank you. Sabrina, my question to you is, have you had time to, over the course of these months, to request? I know at the last financial finance meeting, I requested a fiscal note. Have you had time to come up with the cost of incorporating parking enforcement into parking utilities? That cost being the software, the communication devices, the uniforms, the access to information? What can you tell me?
Sure, so we have, I'd say, some estimated costs. There are a number of unknowns related to the costs that would be essentially dependent on, you know, future decisions. The largest, most significant would be location, whether that would be a new facility or rental fees, or, you know, whether there's the ability to remain where they're at. So that would be one of the costs, and there's obviously varying options in terms of what those costs might be. In terms of some of the other costs, we do anticipate there may be a need for additional support personnel within the parking utility to do customer service, administration, some of the technical support for services currently absorbed within MPD for the IMAT team, for instance, that provides a lot of that technical support. And much of that could still be provided through a fee or an interdepartmental charge to the parking utility, but other aspects would need to be, you know, developed and maintained either with central city IT or within Parking Division. We do anticipate some additional costs with software, with duplication and support. The estimate could be an additional of $20,000 to $60,000 in those costs. And the vehicle storage, workspace lockers, and new equipment would be the other costs that we would anticipate.
And that other cost, are we looking at an additional $100,000?
I'd say if we're looking at purchasing all new workspaces, you know, lockers, you know, upgrades to facilities, you know, I don't want to throw a number out there really without having, I think, a better understanding of specific options. Sale Street may be one that could accommodate some additional employees and would likely be, you know, minimal costs. I'd say $20,000 in terms of new workstations, cubicles. But the larger item would be facility and parking and storage for the vehicles and the parking enforcement officers.
And let me ask you this. How long will it take you to get those numbers?
So I think ultimately those would be, or the intent is to, of this report was to identify some of those considerations of what implementation could look like in terms of decisions about remodeling a facility or finding a new facility. I would anticipate those would be done through a capital budget process or separate resolution in terms of weighing alternatives, costs, and options and looking at that specific issue separately as a future separate, either budget or resolution.
Okay, and my final question is, is this something that, this transfer, is this something that you asked for?
It is not.
Do you feel that parking utilities needs to add parking enforcement to your division? Or can you, can you continue as you are?
So, you know, certainly I think, you know, we could continue as we are. There isn't an urgent operational need for the transfer to occur from a functionality
Okay, thank you. I have another question, but I'll wait. This is for when we get to Dave Semenig. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Let me ask, before we move on to the next alder, that staff, as you're speaking tonight, if you would just introduce yourselves and your position for the sake of our new alders. And so Sabrina, I'll just give you a chance to briefly introduce yourself, please.
Yes, my apologies. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sabrina Tully, the Parking Division, also known as Parking Utility Manager.
Thank you, really appreciate it. All right, so now Alder Lemmer.
Thank you. My first question is, in the report, you went through several other Midwestern cities and where they house their parking enforcement operations and mentioned some of the benefits of housing them in other departments, whether it was revenue or focusing operations. I'm wondering what, if any, if there are benefits to moving it to parking utility that are within those categories, or what, just basically what are the benefits of transitioning?
Alder, if I'm correct, I believe that Tom Lynch did that research. So I'll ask him to address your question.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been, thank you, I'm Tom Lynch, I'm the Director of Transportation, which includes parking, metro, and traffic engineering. I've been in contact with several cities throughout the Midwest and actually throughout the nation. Examples of cities that have parking enforcement in a different division than their police department include, you know, Chicago, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, Denver, San Francisco, Oakland, Austin, Indianapolis, or a portion of Indianapolis. Many of them have their own reasons. For Milwaukee, it was really a revenue generation item. For Minneapolis, it was a more of a code enforcement action. I'm going to say that Denver is a more recent transition, where they have recently transitioned their parking enforcement from police to their parking, kind of in response to some of the recent national discussion we've had over the events. That being said, so there's many large cities that have transferred their parking enforcement out of their police departments. And so, and they're very large cities, and so they have complicated challenges, just like we would, and yet they were able to overcome them. However, there are many cities that don't, that they keep it in their police department. An example might be Racine. You know, parking enforcement in Racine was under Public Works, and then it was, I think it was in 2010, it was transferred to, back to the police department. So I'm going to say there's good examples on both sides of where it lies.
Thank you. I have a couple more questions. I gleaned from the report that we would most likely be looking at centralizing operations, whereas right now parking enforcement officers work out of each district. However, we could have, keep a decentralized structure, but there would be more costs associated with that. Is that accurate?
I'll answer, and then I might actually defer to some of my classes. I think the report meant to explore multiple options. There might be a possibility of keeping them within the districts, and there might be a possibility of moving them to a centralized location. Recently, I believe my classes kind of investigated, you know, the role that the Madison Police have in allowing their PEOs to remain stationed at the district stations or not. I will say that these are logistics, and that whichever way the council directs us to go, we'll figure out the logistics and we'll make it work.
Okay, thank you. I have a quick question that's more around engagement and communications with the parking enforcement officers. The report mentioned a meeting with Local 6000 a couple of months ago to talk through concerns and questions that employees had, and the MPD answered them. Have there been other opportunities for communication and engagement with staff? And is there a plan, if this is approved, for continuing to have communication and engagement with employees and making sure that their voices are heard?
Maybe I'll start, and then I'll defer to both Stephanie and Sabrina. We have tried to engage the staff, and we've interacted with Local 6000. They have expressed their concerns. The report, I think, mentions creating a task force if the council wants to go in this direction and then moving that effort. Sabrina, or I'm not sure if Stephanie or Captain Branny, you know, Chaney Austin is here, might be able to add to that.
Sure, yeah, I would add just a couple things, and perhaps Stephanie or Captain Chaney Austin may want to chime in as well. But Stephanie Neeson, the Parking Enforcement Supervisor, did hold a number of small group meetings with the parking enforcement officers throughout the study process. I attended a number of those meetings just to listen in and hear those concerns. And from those meetings, a rather large list of comments and considerations, workflow items, and many of the concerns you've heard tonight were incorporated and summarized in the report. So there has been some feedback in terms of really just hearing the concerns regarding the potential transfer, what items would need to be taken into consideration and included in the study for this body to have all the information for decision-making. And, you know, if this were to be directed to move forward with that transfer, you know, many additional meetings would be held, and those would be more of a collaborative type rather than just seeking kind of input or hearing concerns, but would want them to be involved heavily in that process and transitioning.
Thank you. I have just one last question for right now. We heard from a PEO who had shared concern that they would have less discretion if transferred to the parking utility. Right now, they have the ability to void tickets and focus on education over enforcement. Will they continue to have that discretion? Is that going to create a challenge for them to be able to avoid tickets when needed?
No, I would not see in terms of, you know, how they do their work and sort of the purpose and intent, which is primarily, or the first objective being compliance and education, not in issuing as many citations as possible. So certainly that discretion would continue to be in place, and I would not imagine that there would be any considerable changes in terms of policy or procedure in that sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Halverson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question, the first question would be, I'm looking at the February 24th PEO transfer memo, is that the most current report?
I believe so, Alder.
Okay, so then in this, in this report, it talks about possible additional parking support personnel, and some of these questions, I think, were answered, that we still have outstanding questions as to what costs or estimated cost increases would happen or occur with regards to dispatch, vehicle storage, parking enforcement workspace, and potential technical support or software support. And it sounded like we don't have the answer to those questions yet still, and that other decisions need to be made.
Yeah, maybe I'll put a broader context in this. So right now, the Parking Division currently funds about a little over $3.2 million of the parking enforcement costs, which amounts to between 92% and 95% of how much that costs. It's likely that probably moving services will require additional licenses, and it might require facility rental. And so those would be some additional costs. Probably in respect to the full budget, they're relatively small, but I think it's fair to say that there would be additional cost.
And then you also mentioned that there was a recommendation in here. I've tried to look through this, but we've been flooded with tons of information. So a recommendation for a task force might be also an option as well to get additional questions answered to make a better decision on this?
I think the task force would be focused on implementation. You know, there will always be open questions. As a major author of this report, we tried to do as good as we could, but there will always be open questions, and I think what's before the council right now is kind of a policy decision, where you would like enforcement to reside, parking enforcement to reside. You know, if the council chooses to move forward with this, then we'll look at various options for centralized or decentralized on where to house the parking enforcement officers. You know, opportunities come up, like for instance, we just recently are purchasing a metro facility on the northeast side, and so that may have possibilities, there may be possibilities in Sale Street. And so the task force would be focused probably on implementation, not so much on, you know, refining the recommendations. I think before you is the question of, the policy question of where would you like enforcement to reside?
All right, thank you, that's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
Thank you. My camera's working. Okay, I just, okay, I'm done. I have a question. So one of my main concerns that hasn't, I'm still kind of confused about, is access to the time system. And this is the question that I had for Rebecca Momford, if they're still here. Otherwise, if staff can answer, like, can PEOs perform their duties without access to the time system? And is there any way that we can find a way to cooperate to allow access to the time system during the transition period?
Thank you, Alder. I will note that we, I asked for questions for registrants, and there were none, and we've moved past that point. But I imagine the question is probably more appropriately directed at staff. So I'll ask, it looks like Captain Chaney Austin would answer it. So I'll ask, it looks like Captain Chaney Austin would answer it. Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Alders. My name is Brian Chaney Austin, the captain with the Police Department. My pronouns are he, him, and his. I oversee traffic and specialized services, and under that umbrella is parking enforcement. And Stephanie Neeson is the parking enforcement supervisor. So she's my subject matter expert, who's been doing that much longer than I. So, and Tom and Sabrina, I know, have done research into this too. So the time system is what the Madison Police Department uses to communicate with the Department of Justice and has access to all of our DLT systems within the state that we have, the ability to pull up status on registered owner vehicle information, driver status information, et cetera. That also has to be worked out, and I think that's one of the lingering questions within the study as to what access the parking enforcement officers will continue to have if this moves from, if this transfer takes place. Two, if I may, Mayor, I wanted to add something to Tom's earlier point. Thank you. Just a point of clarification, and I know Tom understands this too, the Police Department will still issue and has the authority to issue parking tickets. We do that in conjunction with parking enforcement now as they're housed with us. We have neighborhood officers who work with community members to address parking enforcement-related issues that are specific and unique to their neighborhood officer, their neighborhood officer position. So they will continue to do that when parking enforcement officers go home for the evening, and those persons are, who need that service, call dispatch, and it's a uniformed police officer that responds to those. And so I just wanted to offer that clarification, that this is not entirely moving that service from the Police Department to parking utility, as police officers still engage in that enforcement.
Alder, does that answer your questions?
So essentially, well, the second part of my question, though, just to clarify, like, is there a way to, like, allow, to have the certification process for PEOs to use the time, to have access to time, even once moved out of the Police Department, or moved into parking utility?
Yeah. Perhaps I'll provide a little bit more information on that. So Parking Division does have a license to the E-time. It has more limited access. And so parking enforcement officers would continue to have access to the system, but some of the people I talk with say that the information is scrubbed, which means that perhaps if they're a felon with something, that information might not be transmitted to the parking enforcement officer. Milwaukee has access to the Department of Justice records. They actually rely more, parking enforcement in Milwaukee relies more on their internal databases than on the Department of Justice databases, so they don't feel that the reduced, they have access to it, they just have reduced information. And so probably that's as good an answer as I can provide right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is to Tom, and I want to clarify, you had said that you did research and looked at various cities who had both models, whether the PEOs was either inside the police or outside of the police. So my question is, as we are looking at the size, I know that there was 28, I believe, employees within the PEOs here in Madison, did size have anything to do with the decision to move that operation outside of the police and into a parking utility or someplace else?
No, I, none of them mentioned that. I would say that some of the larger cities have, you know, larger parking enforcement forces. Milwaukee, it actually occurred like 20 years ago, and it was revenue generation after they, they wanted their parking enforcement officers writing, you know. In Minneapolis, it's, they felt like it just fit better within their code enforcement division, which is kind of associated with their traffic control. I would say Denver, it had to do with more of a philosophical reason on where they wanted parking enforcement to reside, within the Police Department or not. So size did not appear to be a factor. But I would say, well, I would say larger cities often have it located somewhere else, but I think that's incorrect, because I would say, you know, Green and Appleton have it somewhere outside of PD, and they're more moderate-sized cities.
Okay. And you mentioned code enforcement and revenue generators as, as some of the reasoning why some cities had the parking enforcement inside, police or outside. Could you give me a connection in how that fit when you use revenue generators and code enforcement? Why was that a factor in the cities that?
Yeah. I guess when I say that, I guess I want to say that every city is unique, and they have their own reasons, and Madison will be unique as well, right? We have our own, we will have our own reasons. Milwaukee, the transition occurred 20 years ago. They felt like, at that point, they, the government felt like parking enforcement were being used for, officers were being used for other activities other than what their primary role was. Minneapolis is a, is quite a unique situation in that they, you know, they have stadiums there, and there's traffic control associated with stadiums, and a lot of the parking enforcement was linked to the traffic control. And so it was just a unique situation. Denver, I think it's more maybe comparable of a, of asking the philosophical question of where they want it to be. So I'm going to say that every city is pretty unique. You know, Green Bay right now has it as part of the, their parking utility, and they just feel like, well, yeah, it's, you know, we generate revenue with parking and parking enforcement, and so they just feel like it fits together. So I feel like every city is unique, and Madison itself will have to decide, you know, where they want parking enforcement to reside. I don't think there's a single reason why they have been transferred.
And my final question is, because you said a philosophical question, and so as we're looking at the city of Madison, and we're looking at the 28 parking enforcement officers who've been pretty consistent in not wanting to move, would you say that it is in the best interest, when you're thinking of philosophical reasons, for moving these group of satisfied staff into the parking utilities and morale? So we're talking philosophical. What is your thought related to that?
Oh, I think, I feel like that's a trick question.
It is.
So I'm, so I'm going to dodge it artfully, I think. Right now, parking utility pays for the majority of the parking enforcement, but parking enforcement, but the parking utility doesn't have any direct supervision over the parking enforcement. So that's one consideration. The other consideration is what you want the role of parking enforcement officers to be. Do you want it to expand beyond parking enforcement, or do you want it to be parking enforcement? And then I'll just make two other comments, that, you know, parking, you know, the parking enforcement officers are doing a good job right now. So they, you know, I feel like they are well-run. And then probably the fourth point is that while there's disagreement between parking enforcement officers and even amongst the staff, I do believe that this is a team city, right? And staff, you know, you are the policymakers, and what the policymakers desire, staff will make happen. And so, did I dodge it well?
You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Yeah. You did a strike. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. President Abbas.
Thank you. I have a question for MPD, either anyone from MPD can answer. So I'm curious to hear from MPD point of view. I know through public testimony at common councils in various committees, we also heard from various staff about collaboration they have with MPD, within the system of MPD, they can get information about stolen cars, and also various events or parties are happening, they can also assist MPD. I would like to hear from MPD, what would be the impact on them if this moved out?
I'll speak briefly, and then I will defer to Captain Brian Chaney Austin. My name is Chief Sean Barnes, currently the Chief of Police for the Madison Police Department in Madison, Wisconsin. My pronouns are he and him. It is not uncommon, as Mr. Lynch stated, to have parking enforcement with or without police departments. In fact, when I first started my career in Greensboro, a city of about 275,000 people, parking was in the police department. And then halfway through my career, around year probably 12 or 13, parking was moved out. And so for our department, I think that parking is a supplement to what we do. It's important to understand that police departments, we, our number one job is to be responsive to our community. And so if you can, for a minute, put yourself in the position of a community member that has a parking issue, whether it's someone parking illegally, parking in their space, blocking the mailbox or a driveway, things of that nature, we're able to divert those resources to people who are already out in the field doing that, that work. It's important also to note that, as Mr. Lynch said, we have no issue with our parking officers. They do a really good job for us, they're very responsive, and indeed, they actually help us with some of our community engagement opportunities. And so we certainly appreciate them doing that. If you think about a police department and what we need to be successful, you know, police departments need support in order to be successful. We're not, certainly not relegated to simply powers of arrest. There's more things that we do on a daily basis. In fact, if you look at research, it will show you that 70% of our time is doing activity that is not considered law enforcement, the stuff that most people see on television. That's really not what we do in a police officer's day. And so we have forensic officers, CSIs, we have property officers, we have officers that answer questions, we have a variety of staff that help support the function. And so my only concern is that when someone needs us, or when they need emergency services, that we can provide that, and we can provide that to a high level. So that's my main concern, but I think that whatever you decide, we can certainly work within those parameters. Captain Austin.
Thank you, Chief, and President Abbas, to your, to your question about access and potentially losing access. That is, I think, the genuine concern raised by parking enforcement officers. It's a concern I have, and I think all of you should, of course you will, weigh in in this decision, is the fact that they will lose information. And the reason being is that because they are considered incorporated and a part of the Police Department, we are able to better regulate sort of who receives that information because they're a part of our department. And what I mean by that is that we release some highly sensitive information to the public, to the PEOs, so that they're able to better collaborate with the sworn staff, but do their job independently as well. And we trust in them that they're going to be upheld to our operating procedures, our core values within the Police Department, if we hold persons accountable who are in violation of that. Not to say that parking utility can't do something similar, but we, that is our law enforcement sensitive information, that we're choosing to give our non-commissioned staff in certain fields, such as parking enforcement, so that they can do their job more efficiently and safely. I think that there would have to be some rigorous, rigorous scrubbing of that information if we were to release it to anyone outside of the Police Department. And I would probably equate that to information that we would give to any of you all as elected officials. The info we have is treated as privileged information, and we hold it in that regard, and we safeguard it very, very cautiously. So the information on various ongoing investigations that pose potentially a risk to parking enforcement officers who might be seizing a vehicle, for example, or ticketing a vehicle, or responding to a certain call where we've just had a significant mental health crises, that is all information that we like to release to our parking enforcement, so that they have the tools on their belt. That'll be quite challenging to continue that ongoing exchange in information between two city agencies. As much as we, we love to collaborate, and we do, a lot of that, unfortunately, I fear will be lost. And then Stephanie, if I'm missing anything, please, please pipe up. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate Chief Barnes and Captain Austin for answering my question. Thank you.
Thank you, President Abbas. Alder Figueroa Cole.
Hi, thank you. So I just have a couple of questions in regards to those privileges that this department, that is, the parking enforcement people receives. What is the difference between the services they provide, or what is the risk, I should say, because there's many differences, but what is the risk difference between the services that the PEOs provide, say, against the rangers that routinely take care of our parks in the middle of the night, or the inspectors that walk into people's houses, and they need to interact with people directly? And, you know, do they have any information ahead of time to walk into someone's house to make sure that they're not in the system? Do the park rangers have any access to, to data that will help them do a better job or be at a less risk when they are attending some kind of altercation or situation in the middle of the night at the park? How, what is the difference of risk there? I really struggle to understand that.
Anyone like to take a shot at answering the Alder's question?
Anybody.
Okay, Captain.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Alder, for the question. Oftentimes, although they, they are doing a really good job, I think, of addressing things independently, but oftentimes, the park rangers do call the Police Department prior to responding to certain situations, or asking to meet us ahead of time so that they can discuss certain situations before they get themselves into, and coordinate, and we provide information. The challenge is, is that the park rangers don't go nearly in as many calls for service as parking enforcement officers do, dealing with daily calls, not only reactive, but self-initiated calls. I just think of, for example, one of our staff members who spoke today, Garfield, who's a walker, and who spends a lot of time on foot, addressing meter violations and other violations downtown. Garfield in and of itself encounters hundreds, thousands of vehicles in which he has to address. We unfortunately simply do not have the time or bandwidth, Chief, I hope I don't overspeak here, have the time or bandwidth to address all of those issues that Garfield has the capability to address on his own, based on his access to our law enforcement information systems.
Okay. So my second question. So according to, I know that, I think you, I've been on discussions with you, I'm not sure, on email this week, and also with Attorney Haas and Tom, I and also with Attorney Haas and Tom, I, we had had these conversations. So there's really, there's really nothing that prevent us from doing that collaboration of having, having certain people given the privileges to access this data. So we, there's, I, I think you explained to me that there's a, a robust process for a background check that is needed. I mean, and you also mentioned something on the lines that, you know, that some people may not pass this, 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 um, this background check. So you have people already working there with you. I mean, do you anticipate that the people that you currently have working side by side with you wouldn't pass your, your rigid background check in order to give them access to the tool?
I think I'll, I'll defer to the chief on some of this, Alder, if you, if I may. But in my response to, to your question about granting folks access to MPD facilities, I was frankly comparing that to the City of Engineering custodial staff, the very handful who do have access to our facilities. In our minds, they are considered essential personnel because they provide essential janitorial services to, to, to police districts that we do not do ourselves. And so there's been a very few of them who have been granted access and that's been coordinated between the police department and city engineering. But to your point about the background checks, for those handful of employees, we do conduct a robust, robust background check on those employees. And it's an ongoing process to include if we are aware that that particular employee has a connection or is involved with a particular investigation, we then likely would reach out and have a conversation with the City of Engineering staff. That is, again, a handful of folks, not 31, that will be carried over with if this transfer were to take place. And so you're, you're talking about a great many more people who would need constant monitoring, constant evaluation, constant making sure that we have full control of who accesses our space. And then I'll just refer to maybe Alder, City Attorney Haas and, and some of the questions regarding some of our limitations and contractual obligations when it comes to who physically occupies the police department spaces. If I, I don't think I can call on anyone, Mayor, but if I.
But Chief Barnes, did you want to add anything to that? And if not, we'll turn to Attorney Haas.
No, I wanted to make sure that, that answered Alder Cole's question, or if I could add, add anything to that.
I mean, I'm still a little bit confused, I have to be honest, because if you already have X amount of people working with you.
Oh, sure.
I, I mute myself, I'm sorry. I'm a little bit confused because if you have people having access to this tool, even within your own department, you will still monitoring these people regardless, right? I mean, it, it just, it would be, it would be logical to, to monitor whoever is using the, the tool, even if it's a police officer or if it's a PEO or if it's a, a PEO that now reports to somebody else. I, I'm still confused on that, on that point.
Yeah, I, I would, I guess to make it, so the rules are not mine. The rules belong to the state. There are civil, criminal, and regulatory sanctions that can result from who accesses our information. The, the issue I think at hand is where their offices are now, the access that they have now. They're working side by side with people who are in our records division, who have files open on their desks, who have time systems that are open with information that quite frankly, the state requires that we make sure that only certain people are in or around that area. In fact, there is a pretty robust certification that we have to take. And as someone who knew, I had to do that about a month ago and, and it was eight hours of my day to ensure that, you know, I don't leave my door open or computer open, things of that nature. So quite frankly, the, the, the regulations are not mine. The regulations are the state and we try to adhere to that so that we are, we are not sanctioned.
I totally, I mean, I work for NIT, so we, I'm one of those people that will impose that on other people and we do that in our job. I mean, private information is private information at any level. So I sympathize with that, but that should be applied to all of us. You know, we all hold, hold, um, city people's information. It's not just the police department and we should guard it with, with a great regard. So is Attorney Haas available to?
Yes, I think Attorney Paulson is here with us. Attorney Paulson, if you want to introduce yourself, please.
Hi, so I'm Marcy Paulson. I'm an Assistant City Attorney. I advise the police department, the fire department, and public health on infectious disease. So I've been a little busy this past year, to say the least. With regards to your question, Alder, you are right. We are responsible, everyone within the city, to maintain confidentiality. But what the chief and what Captain Chaney-Austen was talking about is a different level of confidentiality. Under the federal regulations and the state regulations and some contracts that we have in place with different entities, they're not allowed to allow access to individuals within their confined spaces. They specifically have to check people in, check people out if people are coming in that aren't authorized. So it's not a matter of just these parking enforcement officers have authority to be in now because they're under the police department. If they weren't under the police department, they wouldn't be able to access to walk into the private spaces at all anymore because we would be in violation of the regulations. I don't know. I think Attorney Haas has something further to add.
Attorney Haas.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael Haas is City Attorney. Good to see everybody again. And I ju, I just wanted to maybe put a, a fine point on what Marcy was saying, Alder, because what we were asked was a little bit, there's maybe a little bit of difference in what we're talking about. We were asked about the parking enforcement officers continuing to have access to the working space in the police department, which is maybe a little bit different than the police department sharing the information. I think there's concerns with either one of those. But our focus was, as Marcy and, and the chief and the captain said, the state and federal restrictions on that data, who can even be in the vicinity of computers holding that data? And we have firsthand experience with that, just within our office and access that we do or don't, do not have to those records. So I just wanted to clear that we were focusing in responding to your question today on parking enforcement officers continuing to reside and work in the buildings, in the MPD facilities versus MPD sharing any useful information with those law enforcement officers.
Now, I'm even more confused. So if they are in the building, which you answered that question and you said that the answer to that was yes, there's no statue, there's no ordinance that said that they cannot stay in our buildings. So if they're in the building, sharing the space, and, you know, for whatever time, do, do they have, are they able to access the information because they are within the confines of the building?
No, no, I, I think if they're not MPD employees, I think it's pretty clear that they, the state would not allow them to have access to the same information they have access to now.
Okay, so then I, I'll go back to my original question again. I mean, I get, I understand that, but I still don't see what the, how do we assess risk from various areas of the services that we receive today when it comes to the rangers? And I get it, you talk about the volume, but, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, there's, there's people entering people's homes that are, don't have access to this data and they still use you as a backup when they need you. And, and when it comes about, when you discuss the volume, it will also be interesting to know what, how many? I mean, are we talking about every single interaction that the, that the PEOs have? It needs your involvement? They need to go and check on people's history in order to manage it? I mean, that is kind of concerns me a little bit, that I, I want to, I, safety is a big, a big deal. I mean, it's a, it's a huge piece of information here. But, but I'm really questioning the need, you know, how, how much really is this database, database used when it comes to the question of risk? If, if we are not, if, if other people that are doing similar jobs are not using it and they're still using the police as the backup, what's the difference? So, I mean, you don't have to answer that, but it's just the things that are in my mind. Like, I, I just don't see the balance here on that regard. And it's not like you, like you're not going to answer the question. You're going to go, if you have an issue, they're going to pick up the, the radio and call you and you'll be providing the backup. So that's, that's really, that's all I have to say on this. And thank you.
Alder, I'm not sure there is a question there.
No, it's not, it's just, again, I'm.
So we'll, we'll get to debate and discussion in a minute.
Okay.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other questions for staff? Alder Brevier.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this question is for Chief Barnes and Captain Chaney-Austen. But let me just, to reference my question, share that at the Finance Committee meeting last month, when this resolution was before us there, I asked staff a series of questions, but one of the questions that remained unanswered was, it can be found on page four of the February 24 report, the second dot point from the bottom of page four. And it states that the assumption is that parking calls for service and other parking violations between the hours of 12:30 a.m. and 6:30 a.m. would need to continue to be performed by MPD. So Captain Chaney-Austen, as he well knows, graciously provided an answer after consulting the chief the next day. And I hate to read this in full, so I won't read it completely in full. But he says, I quote, "It seems that should this move be made, then it is an indication that the responsibility of parking enforcement would then be that of Parking Utility and not MPD. As such, per Chief Barnes, MPD would no longer provide this service as a matter of routine. Therefore, no parking enforcement calls will be serviced between the hours of 12:30 a.m. to 6:30 a.m. or on holidays, should the PEO schedule remain the same under Parking Utility." So my, my question is, is that still the position of, of you, chief? Or, or perhaps captain, if you want to take a, make a response to this first? I'm a little confused because, Brian, I heard you say earlier in the Q and A that your understanding was MPD would still provide some sort of parking enforcement services should, should we complete a full operational transfer to the Parking Division?
Alder, would you like me to start first?
Whoever, which one, yeah, captain or chief, whoever wants to respond first or solely, I'd appreciate it.
I'll defer to the chief on the bigger issue, but to your last point on a comment I made earlier, thanks for allowing me to make that clarification. Officers still engage in parking, police officers still engage in parking enforcement activity. We, we still issue parking citations. Neighborhood officers still engage in issuing parking citations. We still have the option to self-initiate parking citations violations if we see them. I do not believe that police officers will stop writing parking citations. I think, Alder, to my point and what I got clarification from the chief on, who I'm sure will, will add here or, or to correct me if I was wrong, was that the, the principal discussion here is the, the main objective is to provide Parking Enforcement to be under the guise and the responsibility of Parking Utility. Therefore, as a matter of, of operational practice, we would relinquish that responsibility and not be solely responsible for that role, to include the, the hours vacated by Parking Utility if they choose not to staff Parking Enforcement from those hours. Is that my understanding, Chief Barnes?
That is correct. The responsibility obviously would go to Parking. I'm certain that it wouldn't be an immediate transition, but as they work through their schedules, I'm certain that that would be a responsibility that the police department would not have to incur, which is, I think, is the purpose of, of, of this particular, one of the purposes of this particular move.
Yeah, thank, thank you, captain, and thank you, chief. I appreciate the clarification and I understand the rationale that if we're making this significant policy move, then, you know, why would the Parking Enforcement Services in our community revert every single overnight, non-city holidays to, to the police department and patrol officers in particular? So with that said, Mr. Lynch, could you then just respond as the, the main author of the report? And I appreciate all the research and work you've done into this, I really do, Tom. Could you just respond? You don't have to get into why, why there was a mistaken assumption through the, as a staff meeting, discussions were taking place prior to the drafting of the report. Can you just, though, confirm that, based on what you just heard from the chief, that the fiscal note on the resolution and the fiscal impacts contained then in your report are not complete further? Because we would either have to make the decision to have zero Parking Enforcement Services overnight and on, on holidays? Or, or indeed have a, a new shift of, of PEOs working the overnight shift and on holidays?
Yeah, I, I, I believe this is a grasp of choice. I, I put that statement in there because I, I wanted it as a qualifier, that enforcement during the evening hours would have to occur within MPD. And that, you know, other cities have that in that, you know, they have Parking Enforcement officers, but in the rare event that they need some Parking Enforcement during the evenings, the police take care of it. And so that was just the assumed model. But I wanted to clarify that that would be the assumed model, just so that, you know, you have to make some base assumptions. And so right now, the, the police are stating that they do not want that as a base assumption, but that's, there are other, you know, base assumptions in the report. Like, for instance, one is that all the Parking Enforcement equipment would transfer from the MPD to the Parking Division. You know, the radios that belong to the MPD, that our Parking Enforcement would go there. So it's just part of a base assumption that's common among other cities that have Parking Enforcement housed in another, another division.
Thank you for that explanation, Tom. Then if I could just ask a follow-up of either you or, or Ms. Tally or Ms. Neeson, could you give us a ballpark estimate of, of if we make the decision, I guess it's perhaps future budgeting processes, if this transfer does occur, what the cost might be to, to have an overnight shift fully staffed so that our constituents are not deprived of Parking Enforcement Services? That I think if they're in the overnight hours, they are quite vital. For example, being parked, having a driveway parked in and needing to get to overnight work or, or being parked in in a private property parking lot, that sort of thing, and needing, you know, sworn or civilian officer of some sort to, to have the authority to have our contracted towing company, Schmitz, tow that vehicle out of the way and so forth. So did Tom or Sabrina or Stephanie have any sort of ballpark figures of what that might cost to indeed have a regular overnight shift?
I don't believe that we do. I, I suspect that it would require a staffing model. And so I, I'm not sure if it's within the decision-making power of the, of the body to ask MPD to enforce off-hours or not. So I guess, I guess that would be a, a thing. I suspect it would require several, because there's multiple shifts throughout the weekend, it probably would require at least four or five additional staff members if, if there was off-hour enforcement that had to be provided through Parking Division, if MPD did not want to perform that function. Maybe Stephanie might have a, a better staffing model understanding.
Thank you, Tom. Sorry to put you on the pod, I don't know if it's by you or Stephanie, but maybe if you knew like the starting wage and benefits for one of your PEOs, that might be something you know off the top of your head?
Yeah, I can give you an approximate of what it costs for to add.
Stephanie, would you just introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry. I'm Stephanie Neeson. I supervise the Parking Enforcement Unit. So the last time we looked at the cost to add staff to the unit, the total. time we looked at the cost to add staff to the unit, the total projected cost was around $107,000. And that includes salary, benefits, equipment, uniforms, if they needed a vehicle, that included a vehicle. So that was for one parking enforcement officer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that information. Those are all the questions I have. And for now, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder.
Madam Mayor, may I, may I comment on that, if that's okay?
Of course.
Thank you, chief.
So I want, I want to be clear that, that there's never going to be a situation where someone calls 911 and the Police Department doesn't respond to help, whether it's parking, barking dog, or whatever. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on that. You know, we, we're here to serve our community. I do not, do not want to give anyone the impression that we would not do that.
Thank you, chief. Alder Carter, again.
Thank you. Is, is Eric Nepom attending tonight?
I don't believe he is here, no, Alder.
Okay. It is my understanding, and, and Mayor, I'm gonna have to challenge you on this, to refresh my memory. But it's my understanding that our parks close at 10:00 and our park rangers are not 24/7.
I believe that's correct, Alder.
Okay. Chief Barnes, and you can defer this to Captain Brian Chaney Austin. So when there is a call in the middle of the night regarding the, someone in the park, party in the park, whatever in the park, the Police Department goes out on those calls, correct?
I believe that is correct, Captain Austin.
Okay. When we, and this is to Stephanie. Stephanie, you said that 107K was for one PEO? And you were looking at adding 28? Is that what you said?
No, we currently have 28 full-time parking enforcement officers. If we needed to cover between the hours we're not currently covering, that would require additional staff. How much additional staff, I'm not sure.
Okay, you're not sure. But it would cost 107K for that additional staff, whether it's one or five?
107,000 per employee.
Each? Yeah. Okay, thank you. And then, I don't see, Tom, are you there? Tom Lynch?
Yes.
Tom, oh, I see you now. You look great. Tom, my question to you is, you know, with my background, working for the state, I am used to having a complete, as complete as can be fiscal note, so I can make a responsible decision on which way to go. How, when do you think that we can get a fiscal note that gives us some kind of direction on how much this is gonna cost to transfer the employees to Parket Utility? I think it's easy, easy on paper to say, yeah, let's put them over there and we'll figure it out later. Well, figuring out later might cost more than we're willing to do. So I'm asking you, and Sabrina, you can chime in too, but what I'm asking for is, when can we get all the assumptions that we feel we are missing, or at least I feel that I'm missing, in order to make a sound judgment on transferring parking enforcement to parking utility? I don't want to compare apples and oranges. I don't want to compare building inspection and park rangers. I don't want to compare someone working at Walmart to someone working at Kmart. When can we get that information, either Tom or Sabrina?
Yeah. So maybe, first, can I thank you for the compliment? I'm the first. That looked good, right? So I think it's, it's best to provide an order of magnitude to help the council with their decision. The, so right now, we could explore many different options to house a parking, if we, if we, you know, house some of the supervisors at Sales Street, that would require some remodeling costs, but then after that, the cost is, is nothing. If we house them at, let's say, the new Metro facility, we have more than enough room at the new Metro facility, that would cost nothing. If we choose to rent a current facility that we're currently renting from Metro, Pennsylvania Avenue, that would be 100,000 a year. So there's many different options. I think we would need a task force. I think in, in relation to the whole, if you look at the whole budget of the Parking Enforcement Officers, that we're, we're looking at costs that range from, you know, 2% to 6%, when we look at those types of costs, you know? Yes, we'll have to get another license at E. Time, that's 1,500 dollars. There'll probably be some more in-kind, you know, interdepartmental charges as we interact with MPD's staff, you know, IT staff. But I think, I'm, I'm gonna say 2% to 5%, maybe 2% to 6% would be reasonable. Sabrina mentioned at the very beginning of this, that she might need a staff person or two to help with the, the transfer. Now, those staff could actually be real people that are housed in Parking Utility, or they could be staff that there's an interdepartmental charge, you know? Let's say we would use the same IT person as, as the Police Department does. So I, I think it's reasonable for your decision-making, you know, that the, the cost could range from 2% to 6% or 7%.
And do you force, when you look into your crystal ball, are we looking at a three-year transition since you're not equipped to do it immediately? Or are we looking at a two-year transition before they go into public utility?
Yeah, I, I, we laid out a, a timeline in our report, and I'm just looking at it a bit. I, I feel like, once the decision's made, we'll make the, the right timeline for the transfer. I think there's a desire to transfer the, the supervision rather if, or, you know, within the next year, but we'll need a budget cycle or two, to get the facilities ready for where we park the trucks and the like. And I think that's a, you know, you know, it'll just become a process that we've worked through. And, you know, everyone, every staff person I work with in the city is a professional and they give it their all, and we'll just do it the right way.
Okay, thank you. Is Dave Schmedicki here tonight?
I believe so, Alder.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I am here.
Oh, there you are, Dave. Dave, have you, have you done a preliminary fiscal note on this transfer at all?
Alder Carter, first I'll introduce myself. I'm David Schmedicki. I'm the City Finance Director. It's nice to see you all this evening. No, this report has been put together by the Parking Division. We did review elements of it, but we've not added to that report at all or done any additional analysis.
Okay, thank you very much, Dave. And Mayor, that's all from me.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry.
Thank you, Mayor. I am just wondering if there's anyone in the room tonight that can speak to what the New World Consortium is? It's mentioned in the report at the top of page four, and it seems like it would be the system that PEOs would have should they move to Parking Utility. And I also have a second question, by the way.
Tom, can you answer that?
Hey, I think I'm gonna defer to.
It looks like Captain Chaney Austin can answer that.
Yes, I can. Thank you, Alder. So the New World Consortium is our consortium of agencies and partner agencies that have access to the Madison Police Department's records management system that we, we currently utilize. And so there's, there's, there's agencies that have signed up with, between MOU and contracts with the Police Department to share some of the, the information. Not all. Some are restricted in some of the access that they have, but that is what that consortium is referring to.
Thank you. So just to confirm, as it reads in the report, that Parking Enforcement Officers would still have access, would have access to that database should they move to Parking Utility? Correct?
If I can qualify that and say, I don't think that they would have full access in which they have now, but there is an opportunity for them to be added as a consortium member, potentially, yes.
Thank you. My second and last question then is, I was looking over the report from quarter one that Chief Barnes had shared or was linked to the agenda. Do we have any data on how many calls we're getting on that overnight, 12:30 to 6:30 a.m.?
Excellent question. I didn't research that data unless Captain Austin has it somewhere, but I can imagine that it's a lot. However, it's usually pretty immediate calls. And once again, someone calls 911, we will certainly be there to assist them.
I don't have that readily handle, handy. I know that we, we've looked at that before. I think Stephanie might be able to speak on it anecdotally. It, it is not nearly in comparison to what we go to during the day, Alder. And that's, unless Stephanie has more, that's all I can offer on that.
Yeah, I can kind of speak on that a little bit. The last time we looked at it, the data we pulled, and it wasn't directly through dispatch, so it, it may not be fully accurate, but was 320 calls for the year, but there were 66 dropped calls. That's just what we captured. It, it could be more than that. I think that most property owners and most people know that we are not on overnight, people that call regularly anyways, they know we're not on overnight, so they don't call. They will wait till we come on at 6:30 in the morning. If we were on overnight, they would probably call. But ever since the private property towing bill went into place where property owners can tow themselves without us being involved, those calls probably have dropped during those hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Stephanie, just to follow up on this, you and I had been working with some other staff around potential changes to the on-street parking requirements related to snow emergency. And as part of that conversation, this was probably over a year ago at this time, you shared a desire at that time to actually move towards a, an overnight shift for parking enforcement. We got some help from Finance to sort of evaluate some of those costs. You shared some of the, the expense side of that equation, but as I remember the, the calculations as well about increased revenue that would be also associated with that new activity. And it seemed like there was a case to be made that was almost budget neutral to add an overnight position and swap that out for some of the seasonal workers we have. Is that still a, a something that you're interested in exploring, or is that, has something changed since you talked about that about a year ago?
I mean, I think we're always looking to expand our unit and our enforcement. As for the topic we were discussing with the winter parking, I don't know if that is still on the table. But to expand staff, I think it would be beneficial to the city, yes, to have staff on overnight?
Separate from this proposed move to Parking Utility or staying MPD, you would still say that there's a benefit, that you believe there's a benefit to adding overnight parking enforcement staff, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then, just to clarify, I think, Chief Barnes, you've said it twice now, but given the sort of line of questioning that Alder Brevier had and the quote that he read, which seemed very different from what I'm hearing tonight, I just want to get real clear on this. So today, calls come in for a need related to parking enforcement. Parking enforcement is not on the clock, and MPD takes care of it, correct?
That's correct.
And if we were to transfer the regular parking enforcement officer, staff to oversight of Parking Utility, you would continue, MPD would be continued to provide that service as needed in those overnight hours if we did not have overnight PEO staff?
That's correct. We would continue to respond to 911 calls. However, you know, much of what parking does is self-initiated. And so that self-initiated, you would lose that when they're not there. Do you know what I mean? Self-initiated, meaning they check meters, they check lots, cars without handicap parking, that self-initiated things that they do during the day, you would lose that at night.
Well, right now, when there's not PEO officers working overnight, I think the comment was, what's gonna happen? And today, MPD is able to cover those calls that come in, not self-initiated.
Right, right.
Residents in need assistance, and you're confirming that nothing would change there, that MPD would be able to continue to respond?
We would.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is a substitute in order?
No, Alder, we're still on questions for staff.
Okay, then my question is, is that following up on the Alder's just questioning of Chief Barnes, is that what I'm hearing that Chief Barnes said, Chief Barnes, please correct me if I'm wrong, that if there was a 911 call or if there was some reason that the police needed to act and the PEOs were not in place, that the police would act? Is that, is that correct?
That is certainly correct, because currently the PEOs are a part of the Police Department. So it's an extension. They supplement our work when they're here. When they're not here, we take up that work. To the original question, if we are to move parking and parking is in utility, then the city should provide opportunities for parking utilities to be covered 24/7. However, if someone calls 911 because they have an issue, we will respond and we will help, whether it's day or night.
Okay, and just a clarification question is, is that if the PEOs are moved to, under Parking Utilities, is it, in your opinion, and the, the budget, the, the staff, all of this operationally is moved under the Parking Utilities, in your opinion, what would that, what would that mean to expect the police to, to cover that, that gap?
Well, I, I will assume that the, the move would be smooth, we hope, and that the Parking Enforcement Officers, if moved, would have the time and transition to, but it wouldn't be a disruption. So that if people call, we're not supplementing for an extended period of time. But I'm certain that the transition plan is probably, have already been presented to, to make sure that there are no gaps in service, which is the most important part to me. to make sure that there are no gaps in service, which is the most important part to me.
And the final question is, is that until that transition and that budget and all of that was set, would that then be a cost that would be out of the police funding budget?
I don't believe it would be. I think that the PEOs, their salaries are still under my budget, and so I think it would stay that way until they move.
So, I had heard earlier, and someone said that the monies had already been transferred to the police, to the parking utilities. Is that information incorrect?
I'm sorry, we're talking revenues. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
You know, Alder, it's correct. The funding has been moved to utility. I think that Captain Chaney Austin just wanted to clarify that. But we have moved the funding to the parking utility. It is transferred to MPD, who is incurring the costs, but it is being paid for by the parking utility.
Okay, all right. So, thank you for that clarification. So, the monies has been moved to parking utilities, and the costs for those services are reimbursed by the city to the police?
Well, to be clear, Alder, it's all the city, but yes.
I mean, just tech, I'm just tracking the money in the paper. Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any further questions for staff this evening? All right, seeing none, the motion on the floor is to adopt. Is there discussion? Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start by thanking the Transportation Department for putting together a report. I think one of the things that's incredibly clear in there is that there are a lot of things that staff needs to work out to implement this change. And I appreciate the lengthy discussion in that report of that and appreciate some of the questions this evening trying to clarify that. I think ultimately, this particular legislation, this particular resolution is us making a policy decision. Do we believe the parking enforcement officers belong as part of the parking, as part of the police department? Or do they belong as part of the parking utility? As you guys heard last night and as in the report, it's clear that there are other cities that don't have it as part of their police department. I, as a sponsor of this resolution, believe strongly that the parking enforcement officers don't belong as part of our police department. There definitely are a lot of things that still need to be figured out. That's why the change is not happening tomorrow morning. If we approve this resolution today, I'm confident staff can figure out those decisions. What I do think, though, is clear is that we need to make, that we have an opportunity this evening to make a policy decision. I truly believe that we need to continue to reimagine public safety, and this is certainly a step along that way. If we can accomplish something as simple, as I believe one of the residents said this evening, as simple as this, I worry about our ability to accomplish other incredibly necessary changes when it comes to public safety. So, I'm hopeful that people support that, this resolution this evening, and look forward to obviously getting a lot more information, which we will, you know, and the report makes very clear, especially during budget season this fall. But I do think that we need to make a decision tonight. I think it's, it would be a bad idea, for example, to ask staff to spend a lot of time trying to figure something out and for that habit to just come back to the council and go, you know what, we actually don't want to do that. Thanks for spending all that time and wasting all those resources figuring it out. We need to make a policy decision, and I'm hopeful tonight we make a policy decision to move the parking enforcement officers out of the Madison Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will not be supporting this resolution, and I'm not supporting it because the rationale for the move has not been firmly established for me. It is, yes, a policy decision, but the earlier testimony mentioned a lot of the narrative that we're facing today. And I'm going to just put those out there, because that's what I do, is is that the shooting of black males, the shooting of Mike Brown, the killing of Matt Kenny, Dante Wright, all of those things that we are facing, and that's public safety. And that's in one bubble, and that is what we are facing right now. That's not going to go away. Outside of that circle is the operation of the parking enforcement officers inside of the Madison Police Department. We're talking about 28 staff who have come before us repeatedly and said, let's stay, we want to stay where we are, and operationally, they are doing an excellent job. We have heard report after report is, is that they want to remain where they are. And so, this is the low-hanging fruit. And so, when you're looking at politicizing this, we're not doing low-hanging fruit. We are policymakers. We don't have all the information. We, financially, fiscally, we don't know what the cost is, but what we do have is working. It is not broken. And to move the, these 28 staff out of where they are into, under parking utility, does not seem physical and a good, sound policy decision for me. And so, I will not be supporting the move, and I would hope that you'll be able to look at that and make that decision as well.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Carter.
And forgive me, my dog is barking. I won't be supporting this either. As you know, I've asked for fiscal estimates. I still have not received it, and I also understand what Tom Lynch said tonight regarding that request. But more importantly, do you have enough information to make a decision tonight? That is what you have to ask yourself. Do you have enough information to make a decision tonight? And my answer to my own question is, I don't have enough information to make a decision tonight. We will, we are policymakers, and we make policy decisions all the time. And let me tell you, they're not easy. They're not easy. It takes thought, it takes research, it takes understanding. And you can make your quick decision tonight if you want, if you feel that's what you need to do, but there's not enough information for me to make that decision. I won't challenge you to come to agree with me, because I respect all 20 of us decisions. And we've had deep dialogue tonight on this, but that's where I stand. Thank you very much, and I'd like to have a roll call.
Thank you, Alder. We'll have a roll call when the time comes. President Abbas.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I will also not support this. We heard from 28 different staff members, FME people, I saw Finance Committee report, Transportation, and now we have a very robust discussion. Again, from policy standpoint, there are a lot of question marks about the price, especially about software cost, reallocation, additional personal need, dispatch services. There's a lot of unanswered questions in this particular report, which is in front of us. Another thing I want to, also want to say that these officers who implement the parking enforcement, they do not, as many of us know, but just for public knowledge, they don't have the power the way the police have a power. They don't carry gun, they don't make those tussians. And many of them, they walk on their foot, some of them have cars, and it works really efficiently and effectively. Also, we heard from MPD, the information shaving system they have, which is extremely important to have access to that, they also have access to that system. Another thing I will say that, because we also hold as a policymaker, as we're discussing all of our policy, a fiscal responsibility. Fiscally, there is no clarity how much this is gonna cost. At the same time, I'm personally, and I'm sure a lot of my colleagues is absolutely committed to look into public safety and look into with a creative lens, reimagining public safety. We already, you know, last year, we did the mental health system. I think so we should all look into as a priority 311 system. At the moment, our resident only option, they have 911, call for anything. If the dog is barking, if there's a noise, nuisance, somebody have a loud music, the only option residents are left with, calling 911. Providing 311 system and also providing an alternative system and providing different type of services to connect them rather than asking police to take those calls should be a path forward for us. So, this money and money in future, we should use for creating 311 system and reimagining our public safety around it. So, there is a lot of question mark with this particular, you know, report in front of me, so I don't really feel comfortable voting right now on it. So, I will vote no, as for this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Benford.
Thank you, Mayor. As it's been said, there's just so many questions, so many questions. And throughout the dialogue, and I should stop and say, I really appreciate the comments on both sides, very thought-provoking. But throughout the dialogue, I didn't hear that this was going to make our community safer. I didn't hear that we were gonna save lots of money down the road. I just heard a lot of questions. And, you know, I'm definitely one for reimagining public safety, but I, this kind of feels symbolic in a way at the backbones of the 28 people that came out to talk tonight, that I don't want to play politics with someone's livelihood, with their jobs. We can do better. So, with some of the questions that were raised, one of the comments of one of the public spoke about is that, you know, we got, this opens up many, many issues down the road. So, I find it deplorable that we're towing cars if someone owes 150 bucks, especially marginalized and vulnerable people. So, that's a conversation for another time, but I can't support this, because if we are truly looking at reimagining public safety, this leaves so many questions, and it's on the backs of the 28 people that came out to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lemmer.
Thank you. Since this is a transition that's supposed to continue through 2023 if approved, I'm wondering if it's friendly to add on two requirements. One, to have a communications and engagement strategy and plan provided for how the concerns of the employees being impacted are going to be accounted for and how they are being communicated with and how they are being heard. And two, to have a status update on basically just progress with this every three months.
Alder, if you wish to make an amendment, that would be in order. But let me pause here for a moment and remind us all that if we are amending the language of a resolution, it is helpful to do that in writing and to share that via email with your colleagues so they can see the language that you're amending. So, Alder, what I would suggest is, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but perhaps it's an additional whereas clause or an additional be it resolved clause that would add those two things. And so, well, we have a number of Alders in queue. Perhaps I will move on, and you might craft some language, and we'll come back to you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Furman for the second time.
Mayor, I thank you for pointing that out. I was gonna actually start by saying it's very rare for me to speak a second time, and I apologize for that, but I didn't realize I didn't make a really important point. If you wonder why we ask our police department to do as much as it does right now, it's because it's the cheapest and easiest way to do it. If we want better outcomes, it will likely cost us more money. I do think that in the short term, based on the report, that this will cost us more money. We will see that in the 2021, the 2022 budget during the budget season. And there's no doubt in my mind, this is gonna cost us more money, just based on some licensing fees. But at the end of the day, I do believe the city staff can figure this out. The report makes it pretty clear that all the questions, all the issues that came up today are known. They're not unknown. And I got no indication from reading the report or anything I heard tonight that staff can't figure it out if we direct them to figure it out. We have the capacity to do that. Change, I know, is not easy. It's hard, and it's also not always cheap. But I believe this, again, is an important decision for us to make, and we know the hurdles that we have. I believe staff can accomplish that. But we constantly put the stuff off because we're worried about change, or we want to deny the point that sometimes change costs money. Yep, it's gonna cost money, and that's, again, why MPD does everything it does right now. We don't have other entities doing it. As we reimagine public safety, we need to expect to spend more money as, during that transition. And that's why I'm supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett.
Okay, so I will say like a few things, but to start off, I was, I had the pleasure of having my first meeting with Chief Barnes on 911 this Monday, and it seemed from that meeting and also issued through public comment today that the issues being raised were like access to facilities and access to the time data system. We under, with both of those, we know, understand that PEOs will have access to the facilities because it is city property. So, and they have access to time, and it will, that Tom Lynch confirmed to us today. So, I think what Tom Lynch also said, what we need to do and is understand what do we want the roles of PEOs to be? Like, do we want it to be strictly parking or more than that? And to Brian's point, do we see the, an equitable issue or ways in which this will make our community safer? Frankly, I see several things as a benefit to us. I see that, like, having reduced access to database information is a benefit to us, especially as in Milwaukee, they can use an internal-based system, because it's important that we don't continue to perpetuate racial bias. I think that it's really important for us, and I believe that our city needs to not continue these cycles of crimes, which is why I support it. I understand the concerns of PEOs, and I'm confident that we'll be able to make a successful transition. And quite frankly, we are blessed that Chief Barnes has previous experience with PEOs moving out of police into a different city agency. That said, it's monumental for us to be having this meeting right now on the day that the Most Diverse Council was sworn in, on the day that Derek Chauvin was convicted. And as we all exhale a breath that we've been holding since George Floyd took his last, we must all inhale the awesome responsibility and power given to us by those that elected us. And it's our duty right now to fulfill those campaign promises to reimagine public safety. And I firmly believe that reimagining the role of PEOs and their relationship with MPD is a worthwhile endeavor that we should act upon today.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Halverson. Thank you, Alder. Alder Halverson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great, great dialogue, great questions today on this topic. A lot of, a lot of great things have been spoken. So I work in I T as an I T manager. I deal with a lot of budgeting and also in the financial industry. Yes, this is a policy decision, but it also, we need to take into account the effects of the policy with regards to the financial repercussions. I don't think this is beyond the realm of possibility with this move. And even with Chief Barnes mentioning that he had gone through this already previously. So but Tom had mentioned that he was giving us an order of magnitude with an estimated percent of two to six percent. All the vendors that I've worked with, that I provided a rough order of magnitude, even in those instances, it is provided. They provide multiple options with a with a dollar amount on it, which gives us then the ability to look at that and see how does that compare to what we're willing to budget or spend for this? And then from there, we can have a dialogue about what what part of that order of magnitude are we able to actually do based on the financial constraints that we have? So I would, based on what we're seeing here, I do not feel like I have enough information to make a good policy decision on this because we do have too many unknown questions. We do have too many questions that aren't answered on that. So I would like to see if we wanna, we wanna move forward with this. I would like to see more of those questions, answers, we can make an adequate decision. I think rushing, making a decision too quickly can come back to bite us in the future. And I would prefer to do this right. If we can do it right, we should do it right from the get go. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. I think first, just to speak to that point of sort of rushing and maybe we can just slow down and get some more details. Just for a little context, for those of you that are new, it was, I think, I guess, summer of twenty nineteen, when the mayor was working on her executive budget for twenty twenty, which really initiated the move of the costs for parking enforcement from M P D to parking utilities. And the council adopted that in the fall of twenty nineteen. The expectation was basically that staff was gonna work on this, the operational transfer beginning early twenty twenty. Covid happened. That work didn't happen. There was other more important work to do. And fast forward to the the next budget season, twenty twenty one budget, fall of last year. And we identified some additional costs that were still not moved over. The council moved essentially all the rest of the costs over to parking utility and explicitly directed staff to effectuate this transition, the operate, the the operational move that corresponds with the budget move that we had already approved now two years running to do that by March thirty first. There was, Alder Revere offered an amendment at that time to say we would like to have a report and ask for common council to confirm that decision by resolution before going forward with it. So this report that we're talking about is that, this is, it's after two years of already deciding that we were moving parking enforcement over to parking utility. We were on this path. There was this amendment that we all, I guess, accepted, maybe we shouldn't, and honestly, now that I'm like, we could have saved ourselves a lot of time. But we got a report, we got good information. And I worry at this point, I think a lot of folks are looking at that and thinking it's an implementation plan. And saying, wait, there's just too many unanswered questions, like where is all the detail? It's not an implementation plan. This is, this is, honestly, I mean, and because Tom is awesome, and maybe in some ways, there's almost a little too much detail in here because it sort of makes it seem like, you know, it's we're just ready to go. But it says it's gonna take over a year and a half to carry this out. And there's all of these decisions that need to happen along the way. And all of those decisions that have a fiscal impact are gonna come back to us. Right? What we need to do tonight, this is order of operations. We're not gonna, it makes zero sense to ask our staff to continue to go down this path, tease out some, you know, super granular level of fiscal detail. If folks don't think this is a good move, then then vote against it for sure. The staff needs to know, are we doing this or not? And that's what, that's what this resolution is asking us tonight. And that's really the level of detail that we need to understand. Ultimately, do we agree that parking enforcement should be part of parking utility where all the costs are going? Or do we think it should stay in M P D? Everything else, I think everybody here has said, we have great confidence in our staff. That is implementation. Those are details. To the degree that there are things that need confirmation, that need additional policy guidance, it'll come back to us. But to say, well, we're just not quite ready, let's just take our time here. I mean, this is two and a half years in. The other thing I want to point out, and 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 this is probably a mistake, that it wasn't framed more clearly, but again, this has sort of just been dragging on. This question of like, why are we doing this? I don't understand. Everything's working. Why, why change it? So number one, again, we moved, we moved the the budget responsibility for this two years ago. I have never in my life worked somewhere where I'm I'm responsible for the budget. But I don't have any responsibility deciding who works, when, for what reasons. I mean, this is not a sound organizational model to have to charge parking utility and department transportation with the budgetary responsibility. And they have zero role in managing staff over time, when they work, anything. I mean, it makes zero sense. So for me, just from organizational structure, the baseline should be whoever's responsible for the budget is responsible for the operation. That's the starting point. We need to explain why we, why we would want to separate those two things because that's just not good business. I don't know of any business that does that. So that's number one. That's why, that's why this is in the works. That's why the answer has sort of already been answered and we're just really confirming it tonight. Number two, in in a memo that Tom Lynch gave us, again, back in twenty nineteen, he called out the importance of enforcement within our transportation policies and our parking policies. The T P P B recently formed a subcommittee to to further develop our parking policy. And in that work, the thing that it came out the strongest, and Alder Heck participated with some of the Alders from T P P B on this, the thing that really stood out is one of our biggest issues with our current policy is enforcement. And so we were working, we're there, we're working, we're working with Sabrina. We had a member of the public attend and say, well, y'all should talk with parking enforcement officers. They, you know, they're firsthand, they know what what's going on out on the street. And like bingo for me, you know, the thought is, well, we're talking to Sabrina here, who's responsible for parking policy and making sure that our parking is, you know, on street, off street, that it's managed well, because it's one system. But parking enforcement is not part of her responsibility. Right? I mean, and she works super closely with Stephanie, they've got good working relations, et cetera. But it's not part of Sabrina, who's managing the entire utility, utility, it's not her responsibility. And that's a problem, right? We're not gonna move into a new, much better parking policy. We're really sophisticated managing the parking that we have between ramps and on the street and in lots. For us to move in that direction and have the enforcement component completely separated and run by a by a completely different division, it makes no sense. So that's the, that's the second really compelling reason why this does make sense and why it's valuable. And third is what has been mentioned before, and people are saying, well, you know, this is being used as a pawn in this big, like, defund the police thing. I mean, this is real. We heard so clearly not very long ago of of strong desire from many, many, many members of the public that we need to take things out of the police that don't have to be with the police. Like, that is as clear as the day. We heard that over and over again. And I think hopefully, most people on this call believe that. And we started doing it, right? That's what, that's what we're doing with the, with the emergency ambulance showing up. That's what we did with the crossing guards that used to be part of M P D. We moved those over to traffic engineering. This makes sense. This is an easy thing that we can do, and we need to do it. And everything else is detailed. We'll work it all out. This is a policy decision tonight. I hope you support it. It's definitely the right move. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miazze.
Thank you, Adam. I really appreciate the, all the comments and a lot of things that people have said. I was just sitting here thinking about two things. A lot of people covered a lot, but two questions came to my mind. Is this a political, is it a political symbolic move? Or is just, there was a problem that we're trying to fix here? And out of all the things I've heard, you know, we've had all kinds of budget studies and everything, but we have not even had a equity study about how this is really gonna affect the community. And also with all the things I've heard as far as with the, with the money situation, the budget and so forth, I definitely would not agree to this so far. We just need a lot more information, and we do not have enough information at this, at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Alboras.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I'll acknowledge this is a whole new group, so so welcome. I'm, I'm really excited about working with each of you. We already have a tough vote before us. So I'll just put there plainly and in full transparency that I will not be supporting this, this policy direction tonight. With that said, I do agree with other colleagues saying that we have a policy direction decision at this time. And that we don't necessarily have to have all of these nuts and bolts, pieces of information figured out. That's why we have administrative staff that we pay for. That's why we have front, you know, customer spacing staff as well. So from that perspective, I will agree with, but comments have been put forth regarding a policy direction. That said, I, I think that the policy direction just is just something that I I don't align with right now. You know, I, for a number of reasons. One is, I will share this again, is that I I listen to what my constituents tell me. And I also marry that with where my principles are at and what I believe is a good decision, policy wise, value wise, et cetera. And then I I mix all those up and I say, okay, what's the best decision for me? I I have a really concerned neighbor and constituent that lives, it's a really close neighbor friend who has very, very significant concerns about this direction and decision. And it's not just him, it's all of his colleagues within that division in that space. And I don't think that they're being overly dramatic. I don't think that they're trying to embellish how they feel or embellish what they think will will happen or occur. From my understanding, these are folks that do get verbally assaulted frequently and that that see some really ugly interactions. And they have some very personal safety, occupational safety concerns, and they feel as if though, if it were a man within the M P D, that some of those concerns will be alleviated as well as addressed much more effectively. And so that that is a really important thing that we need to think about is occupational and, you know, employee wellness for for folks within our city, for for any individual who's working within, within the city boundary. So for, 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 that is one reason why I can't support this, is that we've heard overwhelmingly from our staff, we've heard overwhelmingly from organized labor, that this is just not a direction that makes sense at this time. So that that's one reason. We're also in a really resource scarce environment. You know, for for the new Alders, if you, if you follow the previous budgets, it's a really tight scarce environment that we're we're operating within. And to to know that this could potentially cost more within our presumably operating budget, that's a really tough, tough thing to really make a decision on. And I'd love to see, you know, us have more capacity within our operating budget to do other great things, right? Like to fund positions within the library or community centers, et cetera, those sorts of things. So I think we have to balance those those priorities that we have. Another big thing that that comes to mind here is to the, the limited capacity that, you know, our, our staff will be able to have in terms of providing safety within our community. You know, it sounds like per state statute and per, you know, federal regulation limitations, as well as some contractual obligations that we have, that the the space to proximity to information will be limited moving forward if we make this transition. That, that's another concern that I have. And operationally, things are gonna be essentially the same. And so I know the question that I've had from, from our staff is like, well, if it's gonna be operationally the same, then why are we having to move and make this change at this time? So that, that does ring, that does ring a bell to me, that does ring true to me. I do know and understand that we need to move things out of the M P D. I just don't necessarily know if this is the right one to do at this time. So at this time, I will be voting no. You know, any, I think, any substitute at this time that also will still have that transition occur at this time, I think I'll also be voting no on as well. But again, I I appreciate this discussion on both sides. I think it's great. And, you know, I would ask my colleagues to consider, you know, what I've shared, specifically the story of of my neighbor that has, has really resounded with me as you make this vote. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole.
Thank you. I just want to pretty much second Juliana's and and Grant's comments. But in addition to that, I wanted to make sure to, I just want to clarify, this is not an easy decision that I came up to, that I just came to council today and and hear hear this topic for the first time. I've been on the finance meetings about this. I have heard the commentary before. I have studied the the documentation. Last week, I spent, I spent many hours working with, talking to staff, to to Alders, to the attorney's office and to M P D. So it's not something that I am, I am coming to a decision without zero knowledge or with the knowledge that we just gained here. So I just want to make that clear. It's not an easy decision and definitely not a quick decision on my part. But I do agree, the money already moved. I trust the staff capabilities of making the transition, the transition happen. And we have a year and a half plus to get this accomplished. And for all the equity reasons that Juliana mentioned and and for, and for all the reasons I run this campaign, the motivation for me to get here was specifically for items like this, to make sure that we address the issues of our city through the health lens and to make sure that we relieve from the police department things that they shouldn't be managing. We need to make sure that they have the resources they need to do their job and to make sure that we we do so by helping relieve from their, from their duties things that can be managed or that are supposed to be managed by other departments. So I will be voting yes on this resolution. And I encourage those that are still trying to decide which way to go to to really, you know, like, like Juliana said, run your campaign promises, and this is the time for you to actually stick to it. This is what you run on. I know that not a hundred percent of the people in District Ten voted for me, but the majority, the people that voted gave me this place to to base on on my core values. And those core values at this moment, this is one of those. I really, I really want to move into a city where we really take care of people, where we address violence from a different perspective. And this is just one more element to get us there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Vice President Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am, I mean, I've been really struggling with this vote as well. I have, I I started thinking, yep, we need to move. We need to move it. We already started. The money's over there. At the point that Alder Foster made about it being kind of wild that, that the parking enforce, or the parking manager doesn't have oversight over any of the enforcement, I agree, is is pretty wild. But I've also, I've also read the emails. And I've gotten phone calls, voicemails, like I'm sure all of you have, about the concerns of our, our parking enforcement officers. And I, I have been really kind of trying to balance, balance the two the best that I can because I certainly believe in labor and I think, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how we marry the two. What it ultimately comes down to is that I believe that we should be taking things out of the police department's purview that don't have to be there. I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to work on the the mental health issue. When you have a nail, everything looks like a hammer, as I believe that saying goes, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Other way around.
We have a hammer, everything looks like a nail? Okay, gotcha. I'll get that better, I'll get that next time. Um, and, and I think that, that it, it does make sense for us to move a parking enforcement out and the, and it does, it does further that goal, um, of, of moving things that don't have to be there from there so that Madison Police can focus on what they need to. Um, so I am going, after a lot of deliberation, I actually woke up in the middle of the night thinking about this. So, you know, I, I, I've really had this on my mind. I am going to be supporting this resolution, but at the same time, I am going to, um, you know, request, not officially move, request right now that when staff works through these issues that we're concerned about, that, um, that the representation from the parking enforcement officers need to be there. We, we need to allay their fears and we need to be able to, um, find out what they need in a new, in a new department so that they can do their jobs safely and to the best of their ability. And, and I absolutely believe that, that, that having them as part of the conversation is going to be integral. Um, if, if a program like this, or if this switch is going to, to, uh, happen and if it's going to be successful, absolutely need to have the folks there at the table discussing how this is going to go. Um, and if we don't, if this passes and we don't do that, it's, it's not going to work. So, um, with that, I will be supporting, voting yes for this with the big piece of advice that we absolutely need to engage our parking enforcement officers in the discussion in order to make it work the way it needs to. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Martin. Alder Harrington McKinney.
My question, uh, Madam Mayor is that, um, is there anyone else in the queue for discussion or can we call for the question?
No, Alder, there's yourself and one other Alder in the queue.
Okay, um, I'd like to, um, after this next voice speaks, I'd like to call for the question.
Uh, Alder, I believe will be there when, unless somebody else raises their hand. Oh, Alder, if you want to call the question, you might as well try and do it now because we now have three Alders in the queue.
I call for the question.
There's a motion to call the question, is there a second? Uh, President Abbas, you will second. It's been moved and seconded, so small procedural pause. Uh, a motion to call the question is not debatable, which means that we vote on it. Um, and i- if you call the question, debate is closed, we do not talk about the item anymore, we move directly to a vote. Right? So that's what I'm going to be asking you to vote on. If you wish to call the question, if you vote aye, then no one else can talk and we move directly to a vote. There can be no substitutes, there can be no amendments, we move directly to a vote on the main motion. And if you vote no, we will go back to debate and proceed accordingly. Uh, again, I will give you the information that there are at least three additional Ald- Alders who wish to speak on the motion. Uh, the motion to call the question has been made. I am going to anticipate that this, uh, might be contested, so we will go for a roll call. All those in favor of calling the question and ending debate? Aye. Those opposed, no. As your name is called and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Heck.
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Lemer.
No.
Alder Lemer, no. Alder Martin.
No.
Alder Martin, no. Alder Mayazi.
Alder, you need to unmute yourself.
No.
Alder Mayazi, no. Alder Reverir.
No.
Alder Reverir, no. Ald- Alder Vidver. Alder Vidver, aye. Alder Wiheli is excused. Sorry. President Abbas.
Aye.
President Abbas, aye. Alder Burus.
No.
Alder Burus, no. Alder Bedford.
No.
Bedford, no. Alder Bennett.
No.
Alder Bennett, no. Alder Carter.
Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. Alder Conklin.
No.
Alder Conklin, no. Alder Curry.
No.
Alder Curry, no. Alder Evers.
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Figueroa Cole.
No.
Alder Figueroa, no. Cole, no. Sorry. Uh, Alder Foster.
Sorry, no.
Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman.
No.
Alder Furman, no. Alder Halverson.
No.
Alder Halverson, no. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
Alder Harrington, aye. Four ayes, fifteen nos.
Fifteen nos, the motion fails, we'll return to debate. Alder Lemer.
Thank you. Is this an okay time to explain my amendment?
Uh, Alder Lemer, you would be in order to make an amendment.
Okay. I would like to move the following language be added to the resolution. Um, be it further resolved, a communications engagement plan will be provided within sixty days. It explains how, uh, PEOs will be engaged and communicated with throughout the transition and how their concerns and needs are taken into account and reflected in the plan. And be it further resolved, that a status update on the transition process is provided to the council every three months. And I'm proposing this language, um, because-
Alder Lemer, let me pause you there. Uh, the, the amendment is moved, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Alder Martin will second. Uh, Alder Lemer, would you wish to speak to the amendment?
I do, thank you. So I'm moving this because this is a policy direction and, um, as has been discussed, this was in the budget in 2020, it's in the budget this year and the report explains that this is a transition that will happen through 2023. And, you know, we have heard from the public or the parking enforcement officers that they have very real concerns and I want to make sure that their voices are heard and are at the table and that those, those issues are being taken into account and are reflected in what this transit- transition looks like. And, you know, because this is a policy transition and we are talking, you know, high level at this point, you know, I want to make sure that we have guardrails and that this is going the way it should be going, which is why I think a status update every three months to the council makes sense.
Thank you, Alder Lemer. Uh, Alders, Evers and Reverir, uh, did you wish to speak on the amendment?
Uh, no, Mayor. I, it's, uh, I'd be willing to let a vote go forward on the amendment.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Reverir? On the amendment or no?
Thank you, Mayor. I support the amendment. I did have a quick question about it, but-
Go ahead, Alder Reverir.
I would like to, to speak separately, uh, aside from the amendment. My question, uh, if appropriate, Madam Mayor of the maker of the motion, is just to clarify that the intent is that, that the communications and engagement plan would be provided directly to the common council within sixty days? It, it's not clear to me where the plan would be provided.
That was my intent, yes.
So I appreciate that, thank you very much. So it would be introduced as a report, I suppose, at a council meeting in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Reverir. Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney on the amendment?
Uh, on the amendment, um, and you said, um, uh, could we add some specific dates to that language, um, so they will know what those date parameters are? And secondly, um, is this, um, ongoing toward moving eventually, um, the PEOs under parking utilities or is a status report of what that process?
Alder, the, the amendment contains, uh, information about dates, sixty days is a date certain, every three months after that is, or every three months, I presume from the passing of the, uh, of the resolution is also a set of dates certain. Um, uh, you can look at a calendar. Um, and if the amendment is adopted and then the underlying resolution is adopted, then yes, the policy direction would be to move the PEOs to the parking utility, uh, and to provide the, uh, plan and then the, the status updates as indicated in the amendment.
And so, Madam Mayor, I am asking for specific dates. I know that, um, it is an exception, uh, but I'm not going to look at a calendar. I want to know those, I'm asking for those dates. That was my inquiry.
Alder, it, you and anyone else can look at a calendar and figure out what the date of sixty days is. Uh, I don't, I don't understand why it's any difference to say sixty days or a date certain. If, if someone wants to look at a calendar and provide the Alder with the dates, please feel free, but, uh, the impact is exactly the same, Alder.
Is it sixty days from this point? And so I'm not going to get into a discussion with you. It was-
Yes, Alder, it would be sixty days from the point of adoption.
Okay, then that, that confirms that. That gives me, um, date certain. And I don't think that my question was out of order and I don't appreciate you said you, uh, indicating that it might have been.
No, Alder, I did not rule you out of order. Alder Alboras, on the amendment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I'm just seeking a point of clarification and it might be helpful. I'm, I'm assuming you're going to do this anyways, but if we were to vote on this amendment, we're voting strictly on the amendment.
That's correct, Alder.
Main motion would come later on as to whether we want to actually have the transfer occur.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying. Alder Bennett on the amendment?
Yes, is, okay, my apologies, but is, is there a place I can read the amendment?
Uh, Alder Bennett, it should be in your, uh, city email?
Oh, so-
From Alder Lemer?
Something personally, I haven't been able to access my email, the joys of technology. Is there any way you could forward it to the campaign email just for tonight?
Uh, can I ask the clerk to forward that language to Alder Bennett's campaign email, please?
Uh, yes, uh, but it'll take me a few minutes to get that email address.
Thank you, clerk. Uh, Alder, it should be coming to you soon. Uh, are there any other, uh, Alders wishing to speak on the amendment? Seeing none, I'm just moving slowly so Alder Bennett can read the language. Um, forgive me for continuing to pause. Uh, perhaps I will read the language again, um, the-
Yes, actually, if you could, I've, I'm, I'm not finding, I'm finding it, uh, easily, at least on the website there.
I, I've got it. Uh, Alder Bennett, it should be coming to you now. Um, but, so the amendment as moved and seconded is to add two be it further resolved clauses. Reading, be it further resolved, a communications and engagement plan will be provided within sixty days that explains how employees will be engaged and communicated with throughout the transition and how their concerns and needs will be taken into account and reflected in the plan. And be it further resolved, that a status update on the transition process is provided to the council every three months. So the vote before you is simply whether or not you want to add those two clauses to the resolution. Again, we're not voting on the underlying resolution, just the clauses that would be added. We will vote on the underlying resolution next, presumably. Seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the amendment? Seeing no objection, that amendment is adopted and added to the main motion. Now, on the amended motion, is there further discussion? Alder Evers.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, I want to express thanks to my colleagues and to the new colleagues, the new Alders. You've asked some really good questions and you've shown, uh, a seriousness about it, this whole matter of making a policy decision, which bodes well, I think, for the city. And I'm, uh, pleased at that. But, uh, to a colleague who indicated that this feels entirely symbolic, I just wish to remind everybody what's already been stated, that this was passed as part of the 2020 budget and deliberated and debated before council in 2019.
Point of order. Alder Carter-
This was prior, this was prior to the murder of George Floyd.
Excuse me, Alder Evers, there is a point of order requested. Alder Carter, what's your point of order?
I thought we were talking about the main motion.
Uh, we are talking about the main motion, Alder Carter.
I am discussing the main motion. Is there, is there a problem, Alder Carter, with that?
Alders, let me remind you, since we have new Alders, you are to direct your comments to the chair, not to each other?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
If Alders wish to respond to questions asked by other Alders, they may do so, but they are under no obligation to. Alder Evers, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, it's just real quick, so this was debated in 2019, was part of the 2020 budget. George Floyd was murdered in May of 2020. Prior to that time, though, there were these concerns. Former Chief Kobo, in fact, expressed concerns that the police were being asked to do too much. So for some time, policymakers across the country, but particularly here in, in Madison and at this body, have been asking ourselves, what is it that the police are doing or responsible for or managing that we no longer want them to do? And once we've identified something that we no longer want them to do, we've tried to figure out who else is best positioned to take on that responsibility. And as Alder Foster has indicated, we've done that with the crossing guards. And due to the leadership of Arvina Martin, Vice President Alder Martin, we're doing this now with the crisis response team. So this is a policy matter. It's a matter of change and change is difficult, but this isn't symbolic. This isn't just doing something for the heck of it. This isn't doing something to just be, you know, demonstrate that we're woke or that we're concerned about these matters. This is trying to ask, what is efficient? What is practical? What is good policy? And it's not something that we've just invented on our own. Our colleagues in Milwaukee made similar decision and the folks in Greensboro did as well. So that, that there are challenges in implementing this, yes, but are they insurmountable challenges? No. We know this because our current police chief was participated in a process where this very transition took place. So it's not symbolic, but it is change and change is challenging. I encourage the Alders and the new colleagues to consider that this is actually an extension of previous work that was approved, uh, in 2019 for the 2020 budget, confirmed in the 2021 budget. And it's totally practical and makes sense that the operations for those activities follow the, where the money is. So I, I'm going to vote for, uh, the amended motion and I encourage you to do as well.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Reverir.
Thank you, Mayor. I wish to begin my remarks just by, uh, to welcoming our new colleagues and express my, uh, disappointment that you're, uh, faced with this major policy issue at your very first meeting. So, uh, I, I sympathize with that to our newly minted colleagues. Uh, this is an issue that I know that each of you have discussed and, and thought about. I just want to share my perspective and, and my observations about the history of this. I want to make it clear that the reason for my vote, uh, so that it's not misconstrued, I very much support reimagining law enforcement in our, uh, community and, and in our society. Uh, and, and for that reason, I have never offered an amendment over the last couple of years that this has been discussed under- This has been discussed under the guise of our operating budget to refuse to consider this idea. With that said, as you heard, I have offered amendments on this topic. Actually, each of the last two operating budgets at the Finance Committee. Those amendments were crafted to allow for this conversation to continue, to allow for this discussion to continue, to allow for this study to continue. I'm disappointed that the affected employees here have not received the assurances and received the information that they feel that they desire, that they need, that they wish to have. Unfortunately, this was handled poorly. I'm not assigning blame whatsoever to anybody in particular, any agency in particular. But there was a miscommunication when this was first included in the proposed 2020 operating budget. And that's how the affected employees found out, is when the budget document had been prepared. I know, but it was not the intention of anybody, but that's what happened. And from that day forward, it has been one painful conversation after another with many of these affected employees. You have to realize that I know many of these affected employees personally. I've known many of them for many, many years. Yes, I do know your neighbor, Alder Person Alboras. Garfield is quite a constant presence in downtown Madison, walking around. You can't miss him. It is difficult for me to say that I don't support reimagining law enforcement, because I do. I absolutely do. This is not symbolic. It's a real issue in our community. It's one that many in our community care passionately about, including many of you, my colleagues. In my estimation, the conversation during the budget processes over the last few years actually started in the prior mayoral administration as an attempt to assist us with our year-in and year-out problem of dealing with the overly restrictive state levy limits. And an idea was hatched to have additional support come from what I think some saw as a piggy bank, and that is the Parking Utility Enterprise, which had a significant fund balance at the time. This was, again, going back three years. And so from that day forward, we started using additional monies from the Parking Utility to help cover some of the costs of parking enforcement. I should back up further and say, when I was first elected twenty-six years ago, the Parking Utility was paying for, I believe it was five walkers, to enforce parking meters. And those, again, employees have been funded. Those parking enforcement officers have been funded by the Parking Utility for over twenty-five years now. So this is not a new idea that we just went with in the last couple of years. But because of the very strict levy limits and through creative budgeting by our top-notch finance staff, one of the ideas to deal with the severe levy limits that we're faced is to have additional assistance from our enterprise funds, Parking Utility being one of them. So in the previous administration, we start, we went down this path further. We started down this path of having more of the enforcement costs covered by the Parking Utility. And then, as you've heard quite correctly, over the last two operating budgets, there's been language in the operating budgets, which was modified at Finance Committee to effectuate this transfer. In my estimation, that language was precise to say that the transfer would occur of the employees from the PD to the PU only upon further decisions made by the council. Well, here we are tonight. My hang-up is, despite the best efforts of city staff who did your person's work putting together the report that's before us tonight as a part of this resolution and multiple, I know multiple, meetings of staff to try to figure out a path forward for this, to borrow a phrase that perhaps was used too often, but it isn't soup yet. And that's the dilemma for me. I want to reimagine law enforcement. I want to continue reimagining law enforcement. I have no personal objection to transferring whatsoever parking enforcement from the Police Department to the Parking Division. I do not. If I did, I would have offered budget amendments in the prior two years to just pull the language completely. But among other things, I knew that we needed the money from the Parking Utility Enterprise to balance our budget. And they had the money available. Unfortunately, that changed dramatically with the pandemic in terms of their fund balance at the Parking Utility, but that's another issue. My main concern is these affected employees. As I mentioned a moment ago, I know many of them personally, so it's hard for me to get around that. The mayor coins a phrase, which I think is very appropriate and one that is used by many city employees. You heard it tonight in their testimony. Team City, hashtag Team City. And these employees don't feel that they're a part of Team City right now. And that's what's so tragic, because they should still feel like they're a part of Team City, no matter what division or department of the city they're actually employed by. We're all in this together. We're all one big family. So I cannot support this resolution tonight only because I believe that we need to do more work on behalf of those affected employees. You heard it in their testimony. You've read it in their emails. I can tell you that their concerns are absolutely genuine. You might say that they're not genuine, and I'm not saying any of you believe that, but they are heartfelt, very, very strong concerns that just have not been addressed. And I'm not assigning blame for that at all, but they just have not been addressed. I very much appreciate the amendment that we just adopted. I think that would help. But in my estimation, that amendment doesn't provide enough comfort to the affected employees. In all the years I've had the honor and privilege of serving on this body, I have always tried to do my best by our employees. I've always tried to support our employees. I've always tried to stand in solidarity with our employees, whether recognized by organized labor or not. These employees happen to be supported by a voluntary labor organization, Ask Me Local 6,000, before Act 10, Ask Me Local 60, and have collective bargaining rights. Their union is supporting them tonight. Their labor association is supporting them tonight, and I will too. That's not to say, and I don't want any of them to misconstrue my vote tonight or my comments, to say that I will never support the transfer from the Police Department to the Parking Division of their jobs. Because that is a goal that I think is very worthy and one that we should get to and get to as reasonably possible, as practicable as possible. But I just don't think that there is enough tonight to provide comfort to the affected employees. They've lost enough sleep over this issue for now. I would much prefer to ask the staff teams to continue to work on these many issues, figure out where they can report to work, figure out where they can change into their uniforms, figure out where they can use the restrooms, figure out where they can park their vehicles, figure out if they have to...
Alder, you're at nine minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Figure out if they have to come downtown to be centrally located or continue to be able to work on the east-west, north or south sides where they're accustomed to. So that's my main issue. I'm confident that service delivery will be maintained to our community. We're very good at providing city services to our constituents. That's not my concern. My concern are these employees, and I stand with them tonight. And thank you for your consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. And just as a point of clarification, for the new Alders, we do ask Alders to limit themselves to ten minutes on a topic and to try and limit themselves to speaking twice on a motion as part of the rules for the council. I have no further Alders in the queue wishing to be recognized. The motion, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Okay, I think that you were just moving to that to clarify what the motion is. I will not be supporting the main motion as well, because I will be standing with the twenty-eight employees that have expressed they're being left out of the conversation. And we always talk about people over buildings, but this is one time I'm supporting people over policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, the motion is to adopt the amended resolution as amended by Alder Lemer's amendment. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Lemer?
Aye.
Alder Lemer, aye. Alder Martin?
Aye.
Alder Martin, aye. Alder Mayazi, sorry.
No.
Alder Mayazi, no. Alder Reverir?
No.
Alder Reverir, no. Alder Vitterver?
Aye.
Alder Vitterver, aye. Alder Weyhelia? Excuse still. Sorry. Alder Baz?
No.
Alder Baz, no. Alder Burus?
No.
Alder Burus, no. Alder Benford?
No.
Alder Benford, no. Alder Bennett?
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Carter?
No.
Alder Carter, no. Alder Conklin?
I'm sorry, can I just get clarification on exactly what we're voting on right this minute?
Alder Conklin, the motion is to adopt the resolution as amended by Alder Lemer's amendment.
Okay, thank you. So that's a aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry?
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Figueroa Cole?
Aye.
Alder Figueroa Cole, aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Halverson?
No.
Alder Halverson, no. Alder Harrington McKinney? David, sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry, I just spoke over you.
No.
Thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney, no. I show eleven ayes, eight nos.
With eleven ayes and eight nos, the motion passes. And just another point of clarification, we do require eleven ayes for all items, not a simple majority of those present. And so even if an item were to have, say, ten ayes and eight nos, it would still not pass. It does require eleven ayes. All right, so that brings us to the end of our agenda. And at the request of the District Seven Alder, Alder Figueroa Cole?
I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you very much for guiding us through the process with all those little explanations. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alder. It's my pleasure. Robert's rules is complicated. I'm happy to help wherever I can. And so the next motion in order is adjournment. It has been a tradition to offer that privilege to the District Seven Alder at her request. She would like to break with tradition and make a new one. So I will suggest that we rotate the responsibility of adjournment. And failing another way to do it, I'll start with whoever the clerk calls first in the voting order. But first, Alder Bennett?
Thank you. Okay. I apologize. I'm still getting to the Robert's rules and how the agenda works. Is it okay if I add myself as a sponsor to one thing right now, or should I just wait until after?
Alder, why don't you email the clerk, Eric Christensen, and have him... He can add you if it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So unless there is, are any other announcements? Alder Heck, I'll turn to you for a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Congratulations, all of you. Welcome to the Madison City Council. We hope it only gets better from here. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a good night.